Good morning, everyone. We're going to call the meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors, the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board, and the Carson City Redevelopment Authority, and the Carson City Board of Health to Order. Today is Thursday, January 15, 2015. It is 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street in our very own Carson City. Sue, do you want to do us a roll call, please? Thanks.
Good morning. Supervisor Bowden.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Present.
Supervisor Shirk.
Here.
And Mayor Crowell.
Here. Thank you.
You have a corn.
Thanks. Got it. Okay. Could we call on Chaplain from the Sheriff's Office, Greg Legere? Come on up and get a start on the right foot this morning.
Good morning. I ask you to please bow your heads and pray for God's blessings. United as one community of believers, regardless of our faith, let us pray for peace and harmony among the members of our board, for ourselves and our community. May our God in heaven guide and protect us. May we grow in understanding of the needs of our community, nourished by wisdom, knowledge, patience, hope, faith, and love for this community. May we be reunited in our common goal to serve our community as best we can. Father in heaven, we ask you to help us in keeping an open mind, an open heart, and respect for all peoples. May our lives seen through our actions be an example of sacrifice and commitment for the betterment of this community. Lord God, confirm us that we may walk together with you and one another. Again, we ask you to send your blessings upon this board. Dear be glory and honor forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're now on item number five, public comment. This is the public is invited at this time to comment and discuss any topic that's relevant to or within the authority of this public body. And we've got a lot of public bodies that we called to order today. Anybody? Okay, I don't see anyone. We'll have public comment where it's appropriate throughout the day, also at the end of each of the agendas. Okay. We'll now take up the approval of the minutes of October 16, 2014.
I move to approve the minutes of October 16, 2014, as presented.
Please show me abstaining.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. For, one abstention. Okay. Item number seven, on the adoption of the agenda. Everybody listen carefully to this one. I've been asked to pull 23 dog, or delta. Item 28 and 29. Okay, so for those of you looking through the agenda, 20, we're pulling the ones on budget augmentation issues, both at the Redevelopment Authority and at the Board of Supervisors Authority. And also, we're pulling number 29, which is the RAC prior issue, also on the Redevelopment Authority. And then, I've been asked to move the item number 33, which is the possible appointment to the utility, the Carson City Utility Financial Oversight Committee, to move that item, 33A, to right after the conclusion of the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Okay? Any other changes that you know, City Manager?
No additional changes, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to put out, or clarify, that we're going to recommend that you put 33 Alpha in front of item number 17. So we'll come in between item number 16 and 17, just to be clear.
I kind of didn't say it as clearly as you did. Thank you. All right. Unless there's an objection, can we take the agenda as published with the changes that we just put on the record? Well, hearing no objection, we'll take the agenda as published with the changes we just discussed. Now could I ask the board to please leave the diocese, come down, we'll come down here in the front, and we have some presentations to make.
Thank you, Craig, to get this started.
Come up, please.
Thanks, sir.
This is hard, Chief.
It's, you don't know the half of it.
This is really hard. You know, you've been just, you know, you've just been so much a part of this community for so many years that it's difficult to enumerate all the different things that you've done to keep us safe and to keep us, you know, in a manner where, you know, we don't have to worry about wildfires and things like that. And I particularly remember your actions when we had the waterfall fire, you know, that could have been tremendously damaging, was damaging to our hillsides and to several homes. It could have been worse. And, you know, it's your efforts, Stacy, you know, in that area that you really can't put a, you really can't say enough about them, because that's what makes a community safe. It's what makes a community know that, you know, they can live here, that they've got people who are going to be watching out for those things. And on the other side of the issues, you know, you've been watching, you know, for our paramedics, you know, where in Carson City, if you call and you have a problem, I think that response time is somewhere between three and seven minutes. And it's not lost on me, you know, when I go to other cities, or I go up in the mountains or wherever, you know, and something happens to you there, you may have to wait a long time. And we have the benefit in this community of having that kind of response time that saves lives. And your administration of the Fire Department, you're highly respected by all of your, not only your peers, but your employees at the Fire Department. You've just done a magnificent job for Carson City. I know you grew up in the Fire Department. You grew up here in our own community. I just want to say from the bottom of your community's heart, thanks for everything you've done for all of us, for all these many years, Chief.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have this.
Okay. I won't say a lot. I just, I'm very lucky to have worked here. It's a great place to work because of the people. We live in a great community. I know you all know that, but it just bears repeating sometimes. And the people that work for this city, the citizens that I've had the pleasure of working alongside are first rate and, you know, the, sorry. I'm one person, but I've had the support of many, many people. And they're staying, and this city is better because of them. So I'm honored to have worked with them. So I'll come up and take a picture before I...
Before I sound like a two-year-old? Yeah, no, don't look like one. All right, stay here, stay here, just one second. Couple lines to serve, so I want you up there to congratulate, please, and then we'll...
Let's see. Is Al Kramer here?
Yep.
Oh, hi, Al. Come on up. Al, you and I have worked together for, what, six years now? And that's only part of the 20 that you've served our community. And I know that you're across the street now, but I also know that you're looking after Carson City and that your 20 years will continue to be, you know, that you're not going to let Carson City go even though you're across the street in the capital. So on behalf of a grateful community, I'd like to present this longevity award to you for 20 years of service to your community. Thanks, Al. You want? Do you want to say anything, Al? You want to say anything here? Come on.
I think, I'm going to mimic what Stacy just said. I'm one person, but I've had the pleasure to work with some very many well-meaning people trying to do the right thing, putting their efforts together. And by and large, I think we achieve with straight A's.
Go for that. Robert Shine. How are you doing this morning?
Good, how are you?
I see you've got good crew back here.
I brought backup.
You brought backup. On behalf of a grateful community, we want to recognize you for your 20 years of continuous service to our community. I can tell, and I think the public can tell by everybody who's in here, that we are extremely appreciative of what you've done and what you continue to do for our community. We're a better place because of your efforts and because of what you do. So again, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept our thanks for 20 years of good service for our community. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
And you can say something if you want.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the board for having me here today, and like to thank all the public works, people that we work with, and all my coworkers for coming, supporting me. Thank you.
We've got pictures? We're going to be in recess for five minutes while we say bye and thank you our employees. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Really appreciate it.
Kenny, you can't have that.
We've got pictures? We're going to be in recess for five minutes while we say bye and thank you our employees. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
The meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're now going to recess as the Board of Supervisors, which we're going to come back from recess. And we're going to call the Liquor and Entertainment Board to order. And I think it's okay if I just, Sue, if I just mentioned that, where'd the sheriff go?
Probably him.
Okay. We'll wait for the sheriff to get back in here. Let the record reflect that you have a complete board of, the liquor board is here, all of us, including the sheriff, and five board members. We'll now take up item number 11, public comment. Anyone want to comment on anything that's before the Liquor and Entertainment Board this morning? Seeing none, we'll now take up the item of 12, which is the potential approval of the minutes of October 2, 2014. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board from October 2, 2014, as presented.
Second.
Motion in a couple seconds. On the motion, I know there's going to be an abstention.
On all minutes.
Okay. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Oppose, nay, abstained, one. Okay. So get that, Kathy? Okay. All right. Now we'll take up item 13. Lena, do you want to take us through it? This is Tahoe Ridge Winery and Marketplace.
This item is for possible action to approve Howard Jakins as the Liquor Manager for Tahoe Ridge Winery and Marketplace LLC. Liquor license number 15-30370, located 1105 South Carson Street. They are applying for accommodation license, which is on-premise and packaged liquor, and staff is recommending approval. I did want to make a clerical correction on the board action form. Mr. Jakins' last name should be spelled J-A-C-H-E-N-S. Thank you.
Morning, Howard. How are you doing?
Good morning. Great.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about, yeah, pick that up. Well, and thanks for opening a new business in a building that's been vacant for a while. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're doing and kind of take some time to brag a little bit about it.
Thank you, yeah. And we're excited to be here. Basically, we're moving the bistro, or adding an additional bistro here in Carson. Going to have lunch, dinner, also going to have an olive oil market. We're actually looking at moving the winery here also. So we'll have the actual winery attached to the restaurant, so that when they come to do the wine tastings, they'll be able to take a tour of the, of the tanks and the barrels and that type of stuff also.
Very good. What's your opening date?
We're looking at February 2.
Okay.
It's going to be the date.
Very good. All right. And I know you've been in the business, but why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're, how you police against underage drinking?
Right now, we, basically, anybody that looks, we card. We've also done all the alcohol awareness classes. Everybody's been through that. Basically, we have all the posters and all the different books that show the different IDs that can be made, that we can match with. So we have all that available at the bistro also.
Very good. Board questions? Comments? Everybody okay? Supervisor, go.
I move to approve Howard Jenkins as the Liquor Manager for Tahoe Ridge Winery and Marketplace LLC. Liquor license number 15-30370, located 1105 South Carson Street.
Motion.
Thank you very much.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Carried unanimously. Now you say thanks. Okay.
Thank you. No, we're really excited, yeah.
There was a question of whether that vote was going to be passed or not, so...
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go forth and do good things. We'll see you on February 2.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We're now at item number 14, concluding public comment under the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Anybody? Seeing no public comment at the conclusion, we'll now, unless there's an objection, we'll adjourn as the Liquor and Entertainment Board. We'll reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and we'll take up item 33A. This is the appointment of members to the Utility Oversight Committee. We have two appointments. Supervisor Shirk is appointed. Well, Jim, you want to say what you've got here? And then we'll go from there.
I'm appointing Bruce Scott, who's in the audience, should anyone have any questions. Also, his resume was submitted as late material. He's got a great background for this position. I really appreciate his stepping forward and being my appointed person for this committee. I really do appreciate it. Thank you, Bruce. And if anybody has any questions, as said, Bruce is here to answer anything.
I don't think he's done enough for the community, so probably ought to... Okay. We'll take a motion to appoint Bruce Scott to the Utility Oversight Committee. Jim, you want to do it? And then we'll take up lawyers.
I move to appoint three members to the Carson City Utility Financial Oversight Committee, and Andy Ingleman as Supervisor Bowden's reappointment representative, Bruce Scott as Supervisor Shirk's appointment representative, and Michael Spell as Supervisor Bagwell's appointed representative.
There's a motion, there's a second. Anybody want to make any comments on these appointments? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks. Thanks, Bruce, and thanks to everybody who's serving on the Oversight Committee. All right. We'll now take up item 17. This is the issue with respect to the Deferred Compensation Committee. Melanie, you want to take us through what this is all about?
Good morning, Melanie Bruketa, Human Resources Director. I'm asking you today to adopt the resolution that will allow the city employees to continue using the services of the State of Nevada Deferred Compensation Committee. They recently went out to bid, they're required by state law to go out every three or five years, excuse me, to find a record keeper for the program. They did so this year. They chose Voya, which I think is changing names, or ING, which changed names to Voya. So this will allow us to continue in that program.
I've done work for Voya, and my firm has done work, so I think I'm just going to disclose that and also abstain from voting. All right. We'll take up, Karen, you ready? Can you take this one? Go ahead, take it. Go.
Is there any public comment on this issue? Any board comment on this issue? Are we ready for a motion? And do we have a resolution number?
Resolution 215. Resolution 2.
I move to adopt resolution 2015-R2, a resolution adopting and approving an interlocal contract between the State of Nevada, acting by and through the State of Nevada Public Employees' Deferred Compensation Committee, and Carson City, a consolidated municipality and political subdivision of the State of Nevada, to participate in the deferred compensation program and other matters properly related thereto.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Only have one abstention. The mayor abstained. Thank you.
Let's take up item 18.
Mr. Mayor, as we bring up Mr. Ray Prophet, he's currently the chief building official. As you know, Charles Abbott Associates provides contract building services to us. That program has been going exceedingly well. We've gotten great feedback from both the Builders Alliance, as well as the local community. Mr. Prophet will be departing very shortly, and I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce the new chief building official, Mr. Sean Keating, who has come to us by way of Lyon County, where he was the chief building official there. We have worked closely with the community in selecting Mr. Keating. I also need to disclose that I have a prior agenda as well, or prior conflict, as Mr. Keating is also a former Marine, served in some of the same units I did, and I'm very proud to have him aboard.
That's the kind of conflict you want to have.
Mr. Mayor, board, I would like to basically reiterate what City Manager has indicated. Sean is a very well-qualified individual, besides his activity with the Marine Corps, doing combat engineer work, as well as the last 10 years or so being with the Building Department in the county, in Lyon County. He is very well-qualified to take this position, and I believe that the board members at Bond have also indicated that they condone the transfer as well.
Okay, what are we doing on the extension? You want to take us through that?
If I just take a minute to introduce myself to everyone?
Sure.
There's some people in the room that actually know me, and some people that don't know me. My name's Sean Keating. For the record, it's K-E-A-T-I-N-G. I am a certified building official. I've been in the area the last 10 years, working with the professionals and the citizens of northern Nevada. I'm very excited about coming here. I've targeted this for multiple years. I've sat on the outer portions of Carson City and kind of admired, and then finally the day came here, and I'm here. And I'm excited about being here. But most of all, I'm excited about citizenship, to support them in their projects moving forward, to regenerate and revitalize some of the hard regulatory issues that are coming up in the building industry. There is a lot of avenues to maneuver through there, and I am excited about dealing with the Board of Supervisors, but mostly with the citizenship and the professional associations that are established here to make those things move forward in relatively a seamless transition. With that being said, I just, the proof is in the pudding, to answer your questions and actually take the questions of the citizenship and prove it through example. So once again, I'm honored to be here, and I believe the change that we're talking about today is just one step in the right direction to allow the citizenship to actually move forward in a progressive manner. And I say thank you to the executive staff and the citizens who looked out and said, I was one of the guys that you probably want to bring here, and I'm honored for that. Thank you very much today.
Hang on a second, we have a question here, so... Yeah, and I'm not sure which one of you wants to answer it. I just wanted to go through on the board item. This item allows for additional extensions to an existing building permit. And I just wanted to, if you could go through on the record and explain to us how we're going to make sure that this action isn't used in the future to circumvent complying with building code on projects.
Basically, once a project has been approved, the code that was applied to that project when the project was approved and the permit was issued, is the code that follows that project through to completion. The only time that we would apply a new code is once a permit is expired and a new permit has to be issued, then plans would have to be revised to comply with the new code that may have been adopted in the interim. The process of allowing a second or third extension on a project could conceivably carry across the new code amendments or code adoption, and changes could be effective that would alter the design or work needed to complete that project. If the permit is extended, that would not apply. However, if the permit's expired, then the permit, or then the plans would have to be revised. One of those things, whenever we, if we have to bring an item to the board, we would explain that and allow the board to provide input and determine whether or not the additional extensions would be allowed.
Is this ordinance... Is this ordinance more or less restrictive than the International Building Code?
It's actually less restrictive than the International Building Code. The International Building Code basically allows endless extensions.
I think you meant to say it's more restrictive.
I beg your pardon. I'm sorry. It is more, it is more restrictive than the building code. The building code is less restrictive in that a permit could be carried out in perpetuity if somebody was able to continue working on a project and they did not cease working on the project or did not abandon the project.
Hang on, Jim, then Laurie.
Good morning. You said additional extensions will come before the board. Is that each extension will come before the board, or the final extension, the third extension, will come before the board?
Only the third extension and beyond. The proposal as it stands would allow the building official... The current code allows one extension, which the building official reviews and allows. The amendment would allow a second extension by the building official. A third extension would come before the board for review.
In part of my questions I sent to you, and you did respond, I did ask, why not just grant the first two, to the three-year extension to begin with? Why go on that extension? If you could, and I think the answer was great that you gave, so if you could...
Basically, what we're looking at is to provide oversight from the Building Department, which is the reason that the Building Department is there in the first place, to ensure that the work that is continuing on the project is done in a workmanlike manner, as well as in compliance with the building codes. If, the longer a project is drawn out, the more chance there is for work to be done in, or against, the code requirements. And that's why we like to see the work completed in a timely manner. And thus, the original requirement to limit the number of extensions, but because some people find it, especially during the economic times that we've had, they find that it is necessary to extend a project longer than they had previously planned, then we're looking at additional extensions.
Each project that comes before you for the building permit is based upon the size of the project, is the size of the fee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When they come back for that extension, is there a fee for that, and if not, why not?
There is not currently. The potential is there if inspections are called for and those inspections fail. If that continues to happen, we have the ability to charge for additional inspections because the, either the property owner or the contractor hasn't made due diligence to comply with the code. Thus, we failed a project. If we fail a project more than twice, then we apply an additional inspection fee, more or less as an incentive, and also to pay for the building inspector's time.
Thank you.
I'd just, sorry, like to ask a question on the expiration. So, am I to understand that the contractor has to do work, though, every 180 days? Otherwise, it would expire anyway, and this would... So, he abandons it if he doesn't do something every six months?
Yes. If no work progresses for 180 days, the project is considered to have been abandoned or stopped, then the permit would expire.
Okay. And there'd be no automatic extensions. That stops the process.
Extensions are not automatic, no, ma'am.
Thank you. And can I ask just one more on the fee schedules for water hookups? If he's doing extensions, is a water hookup fee at the time he actually hooks up, whatever the current fee is, or gets the fee at the time he originally applied?
I'd have to verify for sure, but as I had indicated in a question from Supervisor Shirk, the, all of the hookup fees are typically paid at permit issuance, and those are effective until the project is completed and hooked up to the, either the sewer or the water system.
Thank you.
Typically, those happen near the beginning of the project, anyway.
Ray, one question. At what point, or at any point, would a person getting the extension have to resubmit for a permit entirely?
Only if they, if the permit, it had expired, if we had deemed it to be expired, or if they did a major alteration to the original plan, if they did an addition, or basically changed the scope of the project.
And just to clarify, and you did answer my response on that hookup fees, and I thought it was a great response from you, and you said, "After a permit is issued, fees are normally only charged for the revisions, additions, or alterations to a project." So if they wanted to add a new water line or something, there would be a new fee for that water line, or a new sewer hookup fee, should they need it. That would be the only time the fees would be increased or charged extra.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add before I take up some public comment?
I think we've covered it.
Thanks, Ray. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody, anybody want to weigh in? Anybody got some thoughts out there?
They do have a public comment to read.
Public comment. Go.
I have a public comment from Aaron West, who's the CEO of the Builders Alliance. And he says, "We are supportive of more flexibility with regard to the extension of permits and approvals. I will be in Las Vegas tomorrow and am able to attend, but please articulate our support. Thank you, Aaron West, CEO, BON."
Any other public comment? We're hearing none. Are we ready for a motion? Supervisor Abau, go.
What's the bill number?
That is bill number 101.
I move to introduce on first reading, bill number 101, an ordinance amending the Carson City Municipal Code Title 15, Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.05 Building Code, Section 15.05.020, Adoption and Administration of Building Codes, Section 105 Permits, by amending Section 105.5 Validity of Permit to allowing the building official to approve a second permit extension, and to allow the Board of Supervisors to approval subsequent extensions, and the other matters properly related thereto.
Second.
Motion in a couple seconds.
And I do have a comment. There needs to be corrected on this resolution. I think Alan's name is still on it, so it needs to state yours.
We'll get that fixed. Any other discussion? There's a motion. Is there just further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Thanks, Ray, and thanks to the Marines.
Right.
What'd you say?
Right.
You know what? You guys just remember how you got where you are.
Yeah.
Ready to take up open space? Hang on here a minute. This is... Yeah. Ms. Bollinger, are you going to take us through this?
I will begin the item for you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
For the record, Ann Bollinger, Open Space Administrator. The item in front of you is regarding the BLM Resource Management Plan. And with us today, we have Ms. Colleen Severs. She will walk you through the plan. But before she does so, I would like to provide you a little background to what led us to today. Most recently, Colleen has presented the same PowerPoint presentation to the Open Space Advisory Committee and to the Parks and Recreation. And both committees will be submitting a comment letter, and then that will be back in front of the board in March for a final submittal to the BLM. I will go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Colleen Severs.
Hi, Colleen. Good morning to you.
Good morning. Colleen Severs, I'm with the Carson City BLM. I am the Resource Management Plan Project Lead. Also with me today is Leon Thomas, the Sierra Front Field Manager.
Good to see you again, Leon. Taking care of the horses?
Yeah.
All right.
I would just like to present a quick overview of our Resource Management Plan revision. We are in that process of revising our land use plan. So, Carson City manages, or within our planning area, we have about 9 million acres. BLM manages almost 4.8 million acres of those. Our current land use plan is dated 2001. At that time, it was consolidating eight land use planning documents and several amendments. Since that time, we have added five amendments. Well, since 2001 and all of those amendments, we've had a lot of changes to the environment. Renewable energy has come out, sage grouse, and then the urban interface expansion. And it is time to revise our documents. So, we have started that process. BLM manages just over 41,000 acres for Carson City. That map just kind of shows the general area. We started the scoping process, asking the public for what BLM should be considering, what are the issues out there, that kind of information, back in early 2012. We received over 1,700 comments. Almost 300 individuals did comment on that document. A lot of our usual suspects, Wild Horse and Borough, special designation, sage grouse, energy development, those kinds of things are the comments that we got. We have 27 signed memorandums of understanding as cooperating agencies. Carson City did sign an MOU, and has been at the table as we've developed the document. And we've taken those kind of comments throughout the process, working staff level to staff level, trying to address those concerns that Carson City had. We've done over 110 public meetings and presentations on this document since 2012. Lots of outreach has occurred with the public. Within our document, it is, I'm going to say, a large document. It's over 2,000 pages. We are considering five different alternatives. Alternative A is our no-action alternative. That's current management. Alternative B is a resource-use-based alternative. It usually has the fewest protective measures and the fewest restrictions. Alternative C is a conservation-based alternative, most special designations, most protection. Alternative D is kind of a unique one in BLM's land use planning process. It's an urban interface-based alternative. We have so much recreation and urban interface along the Sierra Front, and BLM land backing right up to development, and a lot of land tenure changes. And we wanted to find an alternative that kind of focused management on those kinds of concerns. Alternative D is the agency preferred, or excuse me, Alternative E, yes, is the agency preferred. It is a mix of all of those alternatives, trying to find a balance between development, recreation, those kinds of interests, and managing the lands sustainably. So, I've just picked out a few of some of the overarching resource issues that I thought Carson City might be interested in. But we do cover the whole gamut, from air, water, vegetation, down to renewable energy. I mean, it's a huge document and covering all kinds of things. For Wild Horse and Borough, currently, we have 19 HMAs or herd management areas. On Alternative E, we are reducing that under the agency preferred, down to 13. We have some herd management areas that lack water, lack any, they lack horses. They're old designations that have been carried forward. They were incorrectly classified at the time. So, we're trying to clean up some of those errors. We do have a slight reduction in acres. On the next slide. So, for Carson City, it's the Pine Nut Herd Management Area. The red hashed mark is the herd area. That was designated by Congress back in the early 1970s. The blue area, under Alternative E, will be the herd management area. We have pulled that boundary back and reduced some acres to pull it away from that urban conflict that we see happening. So, for visual resource management, there are four classes of VRM. Class 1 is wilderness areas, wilderness study areas. That's where that number comes from. For VRM Class 2, those are visual settings where we try to preserve the character. You can have modifications out there, but they should not attract the attention of the casual observer. Under VRM Class 3, you can have major modifications out there, but they really shouldn't draw your attention. Under VRM Class 4, major modifications to the landscape, they are going to attract your attention, kinds of things. Well, currently, within our whole district, we have almost 3.5 million acres undesigned, so it has no VRM classification for it. And so, we've kind of based, depending on what kind of resource issues we have out there, what kind of resources we're trying to protect, split out what VRM classifications that we have. So, for Carson City, the blue is VRM Class 2. That indicates the National Historic Trail. The green is VRM 3, where you can have some modifications out there on the landscape. And the orange is VRM Class 3, no, excuse me, the green is VRM Class 4, where you can have major modifications out there on the landscape. And the orange is VRM Class 3, where we're going to try to preserve the setting. And the orange actually continues on down into Douglas County along the Pine Nut Range. For Recreation and Travel Management, we have a couple designations, SRMA's, which are special recreation management areas, where recreation is the primary resource use out there, and ERMA's, which is extensive recreation management areas, where recreation activities are occurring and we need to develop some special management, but it's equal with all of the other resources and uses out there. For Carson City, we are not proposing any special recreation management areas. Go to the next slide. But we are proposing some extensive recreation management areas under Alternative E, having to do with the Pine Nut Range. We really do need some specific management to help guide those activities out there and balance the uses that are occurring. For travel management, we really, we have three classifications, open, limited, and closed. If it's not open or closed, the default is limited. Within Carson City, all of the area is currently limited to existing roads and trails. We are proposing to keep that under the preferred alternative. I'll use the analogy that we used at Parks and Rec when we presented in front of them. If we looked at our planning areas, the building to the street, you've got your blacktop where you park, you've got sidewalks, grass, bushes. Open means I can take my car and I can drive across the sidewalk. I can drive across the grass. Limited means I'm restricted to staying on the blacktop. That's kind of a really simple look at the difference between limited and open. Within our district currently, we have 3.8 million acres open or undesigned, which is managed as open. As I said before, if it's not open or closed, the default is limited, which gives us our 4.7 million acres of limited to existing roads and trails. The next step after our Resource Management Plan is done is to go into actual travel management planning, where we look at all of the roads and trails that are out there, and we start looking at what are the resource concerns? Do we need to close Road A? Does Road B and C lead to the same location, those kinds of things? But that's a whole separate process that is done in a public forum after the Resource Management Plan is signed and completed. For lands and realty, currently, there's 160 acres within Carson City available for disposal. We are adding 40 acres to that, a parcel over by the water tank that was left out of the 2010 lands bill. We have worked with staff, looking at the map, looking at each parcel. Is it adequate? Is it what Carson City wanted? And we didn't come up with anything else, although we do have the opportunity between now and when the final EIS and the decision is made to adjust that, should something pop up. There are no right-of-way exclusion areas proposed within Carson City, but we are proposing a few right-of-way avoidance areas. And those are areas where we really would rather not see transmission lines or roads. They could occur if they are proposed, but they would probably be heavily mitigated, depending on what kind of issues came up as we did the analysis. There are no wind or avoidance areas proposed within Carson City. We do have a wind exclusion area proposed north for the Virginia City National Historic Landmark, and it would kind of branch over into the top of the hill for Washoe County. Areas of critical environmental concern, or ACECs, currently, our district has six. Under Alternative E, the preferred, we are proposing eight. Of that six, we're actually going to remove the designation from two, and we're going to add four more designations. Next slide. For Carson City, we do have a couple proposed under some of the alternatives. For cultural reasons, biological and botanical, those are shaded in the purple area up there on the map. Under Alternative E, agency preferred, we are not proposing any areas of critical environmental concern within Carson City. But they are included within our analysis, within the range. Okay. So, kind of our timeline, we are within our 120-day public So kind of our timeline, we are within our 120-day public review and comment period. That does end on March 27. At that time, we will take comments that we've received from the public and from our partners, revise the document, come up with a final EIS and a proposed RMP. Takes about a year, nine months to a year to do that. And then about summer of 2016, we'll sign a record of decision to work on that. So ways to provide comment, through our email, fax, mail, regular mail. All of our documents are available on the website, including all the supporting reports that we generated that worked into our environmental document. So, just a quick overview.
That's a good overview. Supervisor Aba.
I have just a couple of questions. Within Alternative E, which is the preferred, can you briefly describe what you're considering in terms of wild horse management? Is that going to be inoculation? Is it going to be roundup? Do you have any idea? That's the first question.
Within the land use planning umbrella, that level, it's a 30,000-foot level, the decision really is HMA's, which ones, and what are those boundaries going to be? The management of those actual horses is implementation level, when we actually look at the numbers of horses and how we're going to gather and that kind of a thing. While we do talk about it within the plan, is making fertility controls available, certainly priorities, trying to prioritize gathers in sensitive areas, sage grouse habitat, for example, or where we have safety concerns. We do talk about that, but really, the land use planning decision is herd management areas and the boundaries associated with those.
And then the other question that I have is, in terms of managing land and the flooding issues that we have in Fish Springs and some of those areas this year, the comment has been that it's BLM land that's creating this slide that comes into communities. How is that going to be addressed?
We do talk about, some of that, from my understanding, is tied to recreation use, and some of that concern can be addressed within the travel management planning process, which is going to come after, not real soon, unfortunately. And that's where we will look at which roads are appropriate, in which areas, what type of recreation use, whether it is just a trail for recognized use versus actual motorized use. But that kind of management is not normally a land use planning-level decision.
Other board comments, questions? Public comments or questions? Morris? That calling. Sit.
Morning, Board. Mayor, Morris White for the record. I've attended those previous presentations with the BLM staff, and I appreciate the conversation that we've had. They've relieved some of my concerns, but unfortunately, those conversations created more questions than concerns. The real basis of my concern is, this management plan does not appear to be based in science. And I would like to point out a few of those examples for you. If you go to page 19 of Chapter 4, which I'm sure you don't have all 2,078 pages in front of you, the statement is made, "Particulate matter emissions, fugitive dust, are primarily caused by ground-disturbing activities and vehicular traffic on unpaved roads and surfaces, associated with development and operation and with recreation primarily OHV use." When this statement is made here, there's no direction given to find a study or a database that would prove this statement. Therefore, it's opinion and not science. If you go to page 206, also in Chapter 4, the statement is made, "Long-term impacts of recreation on wild horses include loss of forage and reduced forage palatability because of dust on vegetation." Again, no reference to any study or database that would corroborate that, leaving it strictly an opinion. Throughout this management plan, it references Land Use Planning Handbook. I took the time to look through that handbook, and I have to tell you, what I found there is likewise disturbing. On page 13, again, no scientific basis, it says here that certain lands may be open or closed to specific uses based on legislative, regulatory, or policy requirements or criteria to protect sensitive resource values. No science. If you go to the Appendix D, page 1 of this Land Use Planning Handbook, it says here, "By statute, regulation, and executive order, the BLM must utilize social science in the preparation of informed, sustainable land use planning decisions." The definition of social science being, "Social science information in land use planning can include the economic, political, cultural, and social structure of communities, regions, and the nation as a whole. Social values, beliefs, and attitudes, how people interact with the landscape, and a sense of place issues." No mention of real science. Now, I had this concern, as you well know, as I have addressed this board before, the closing of roads not based in science. Previously, staff, BLM staff and Parks Open Space staff has corroborated that indeed BLM has included recommendations from Carson City staff. So we come to Volume 5, Appendix F, Land Use Requests. And Carson City staff has asked that 18,594.720 acres be withdrawn from recreational use. I asked Roger if he could compile a report of what requests they made of BLM. He's agreed to that concept, and I would formally ask you today that you ask staff to compile that report, because I think Carson City residents need to know what input Carson City staff has made to this. And I give you that one example of the 18,594 acres. I'll give you another example. I'm sure you've noticed along Flint Road, BLM has put in place a series of large boulders restricting access to some of those roads and parking areas. I asked Carson City Parks staff what the purpose of that was, and I got a rather dismissive response that that's a BLM project. I asked BLM staff why that was done, and I was told by BLM staff that Carson City, Parks and Rec, and Open Space staff requested that. In this report that I'm asking you to have Parks staff compile, I would ask you to also include some specifics regarding the Pine Nut Range and Virginia Range. And I asked for that because the close proximity of those properties are places where a large majority of Carson City residents recreate. Thank you.
Okay. Other public comment? Board? This is Jim. Go.
Well, the comments that were just made in reference to the city staff report, is that something we must agendicize, that the board must ask the board to do? Or is the board just going to assume to do it? What he just missed, Mr. White just mentioned?
I think the question is, you know, if our staffs are, what I understand, our staffs agreed to do it, so we'll see what happens there.
So it's already in the process?
Right. I understand.
Does that answer your question, Mr. White?
Hang on. We've got to, okay. Make sure we talk in front of the microphones here. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Anything else to come before this item? Go.
When will that report come back? Will the report come back to the board? And if so, when? Can we anticipate that?
I don't know that, Roger, you want to talk to that?
For the record, Roger Mullendorf, Parks and Recreation Director. Morris White is completely correct. We did have this discussion, and we did commit to him that we would do a search and find the reports, and we'll bring those forward to the board. It would be, I guess, really, it's the board's pleasure, where they'd like to have that as an agenda item brought forward to you during a Board of Supervisors meeting, or if you'd like that for information only, you know, sent to you. But we're happy to, we're happy to bring it back in any manner you'd like.
Okay. We'll have the city manager cross that bridge.
Okay.
Ask Roger a question. Roger, when do you think that may be accomplished? Six months?
We should be able to accomplish that fairly soon. Juan Guzman was our representative at the time, so we're going to have a meeting with him as well to follow up on these reports.
Thank you.
Anything else?
If I, I did, would like to mention two things. One, the comment that Mr. White had regarding opinion versus science, that is a perfect comment the public should be submitting to the BLM during this open comment period.
I got you. I think he's.
That's a, that's a perfect time. Additionally, BLM is hosting a public meeting in Carson City on Saturday, January 24, from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Carson City Plaza Hotel. And we welcome the members of the public to come, visit with our staff, ask questions, try to, you know, get some clarification on things that they might have questions on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's take a short break here for five minutes. Going to call a meeting back to order. We're now on item number twenty, or excuse me, nineteen B. This is the Open Space Committee with possible acquisition of 20 acres. They're requesting for an expenditure of up to $30,000 for appraisal. Ms. Bolinger, you going to take us through this one again? Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I will. Thank you for that introduction. I know you have a busy day, but I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I would, I developed to help me walk through this process, but also tried to clarify some of the complex aspects of this transaction. First, to help identify the location for you, this is one of the aerial maps from Carson City. You can see Carson City roughly with the yellow parcel lines just to the right of the map. The parcel, if you, the red line is Highway 50 traveling up towards Spooner Summit. It's located maybe about a third of the way up this hill. In a closer aerial view, the property is located just near the Clear Creek interchange. So on the north side of Highway 50, the parcel where the Clear Creek interchange is owned by State Lands. So this is the next parcel to the east. The adjacent land ownership is Open Space. Actually, what you see in blue was the Open Space fee title purchase of the Horse Creek Conservation easement. And in the uncolored area, this is where we have the conservation easement. These are a couple other areas. Woods Ranch, they would like to also pursue a conservation easement with the Open Space We have talked with them that they are under this understanding, like Mr. Fagan is for this acquisition, that we don't have money, but we could look at alternatives. So there are private properties to the east of this, and all the green is Forest Service land. So in this area, there is a lot of public land. The current zoning for the subject parcel is Conservation Reserve, and the master plan is single-family. And so with that zoning and master plan, Mr. Fagan or another owner after this could build one structure on that property. Mr. Fagan, in just general conversations with an appraiser, appraiser, Bill Kimmel, estimated the value of this property as $250,000. $250,000 for 20 acres. General conversation, it's not a written appraisal at this point. A few pictures, just to show you the characteristic of the property. It's actually very pretty property. I don't have evidence on this property of a burn. So a wildfire or any fire on this property, it's been a long time. So the vegetation is just beautiful in there. The trees are different age class, so some of the younger trees, not old trees, so it's probably logged during the Comstock mining era in the 1800s. But just, just the vegetation's beautiful on this property. Another perspective of this property, this view, is standing on the south side of 50, looking to the north. You can see the U.S. Forest Service sign, so if you're driving in that area, this will give you some perspective on the landscape where this property is located. Few more pictures. When the Open Space Advisory Committee is reviewing parcels for acquisition, we do have an evaluation form and some of the criteria. And so the, the characteristics that scored high on the evaluation form are identified here. So medium to high-value habitat for wildlife. And one of, one of the reasons it's considered high habitat is because it's next to undeveloped parcels. I dropped it down to medium because it is also next to Highway 50. There's the presence of mature canopy trees and shrubs, the ridge with long views. On this property, you don't have a view of Carson City, but the views are amazing down to Carson Valley. Visible from Highway 50, it is right adjacent, the size of 20 acres if purchased by Carson City. It is accessible to the public. There would not be any restrictions. The topography might limit some activities, but it could be open. And it does contain high infiltration soils within a watershed protection area.
And may I ask you a question? When you say accessible to the public, how is it accessible to the public? Where would they park their vehicle to access that? Or they have to hike to it? Or how will it become accessible to the public?
Currently, as it is, we would not recommend, there, there is shoulder parking on Highway 50. It is not that we would recommend shoulder parking because we would have to coordinate with NDOT. But as I walk through this, if I, if I may, this parcel is also identified for trails in Carson. And so parking could be available on other parcels, which might be the most desirable thing for Carson City. And I'll try to bring those areas to your knowledge. And then, but there, if, 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 and there, this would be high, a high-cost project, we could develop a trailhead facility. There, there is a bench on this property that could be developed similar to the Tahoe Rim Trail parking on Spooner Summit. That would be costly, but it could be done. Other prioritizing factors, it can be acquired with terms. The owner, Mr. Fagan, knows we have very limited funding, so he was open to consider trade of other parcels in Carson City if they were available. It is located within an Open Space priority area. The Open Space master plan identified three priority areas, the Carson River, certain agricultural lands around Carson City, and Hillside. So this falls under the Hillside category. It is designated in, on the Open Space master plan, and it is adjacent to other Open Space parcels. So as I mentioned, perhaps one of the, the most important factors of this parcel, that the arrow shows you the location, the dotted line is proposed trails. When the Unified Pathways master plan was developed, and you can see at the top of the map, there's other dotted trails. They are dotted because they were proposed and conceptual, conceptual on a map. And so when the Unified Pathways master plan was developed, they did not take into consideration topography and other geographic constraints. So it's just a dotted line saying, we want a trail here. And then similar to the Ash to Kings Trail in Jeff Potter, Muscle Powered, they use this for their planning. And, and that trail does not follow this very much, because once they started on the ground to identify those canyons and other topographic constraints, it, it does not follow the topographic line on this map very well. And so as we move forward, the dotted line here shows that we, Carson City, in an adopted plan, identified a trail in the area. And so the parcel next to it, again, is in a previous map, is State Lands. I don't know how well we could work with State Lands, but this parcel gives us that alternative. So it is strategic for the long-term planning of Carson City. So there's two, two concepts here. One is open space. The visual characteristics of driving up Highway 50, do, do we want a house right next to the highway? Would that impact our view shed of residents driving up and down that corridor? That would probably be the only house on that stretch, because most of it is Forest Service. But also the long-term planning of trails in our community. So that's important to keep in mind. So the discussion at next steps. I needed to throw a couple discussion items in one agenda, because it's all interrelated, but it is complex. So the, the item in front of you is the possible acquisition. This does not, I'm not asking for approval on acquisition. I'm just asking for the next steps to proceed forward. So what would that mean? One is a trade with other city parcels. Today, we're not ready to discuss what those other parcels are. Just on the staff side of things, we wanted to get the feeling from the board, are, does the board want to move forward with acquisition of this property? Because if you don't, then we don't need to waste staff time pursuing other parcels. We've looked at maps. There's maybe a few out there, but then we need to make that, that next step forward. Are there deed restrictions? Some properties just may not be, be sold for whatever reason. Just like Open Space, we have a lot of restrictions on our property from, from the ordinance that we purchase our properties, as well as the grant funding. So other properties might have their restrictions, but at this point, we have not spent staff time if, if you do not recommend this, this purchase. The next step is, and so if you agree that this could be a possible acquisition, we will make that next step to identify those parcels. Then we will bring those to the board for your approval. Does the board agree on disposal or through trade of those parcels? If you agree, then there would be the expenditure of $30,000 for appraisals. It looks like a high-dollar amount here, but because there would be multiple appraisal or appraisals versus just one for our property, because we need to know that value of trade, that's why the dollar amount is so high. So it, it's a step-by-step process that I will, if agreed today, I will continue communication with the board on this transaction. Are there any questions?
Laurie.
So you're asking, though, for the expenditure of $30,000. Is the better question to ask us whether we want you to identify properties? And you ask us about the properties first, and if we're interested in trading that property, then we authorize the money. So I don't think we should authorize expenditure till we have an idea of what properties are available. So it's just a thought process. Also, what concerns me about this is we've had, not me personally, but I've heard lots of discussions on Old Clear Creek Road. Does this put more pressure on, on the issues of Old Clear Creek Road, because there's no parking to access for this?
I wouldn't, did you want?
Well, I guess, I'll take a stab at answering the second question. I don't think it, it puts any more pressure on the city to move forward on the Old Clear Creek Road project that's been, you know, brought for you before. If anything, if that project would happen to go away, it still, it still allows the opportunity for future access into open space lands and the trail network that would be coming up from the Carson Valley Trails into Carson City Trails as well. So I think what it does is it doesn't, I don't think it increases any pressure that you would have to make a decision on Old Creek, Old Creek property, Old Clear Creek property, thank you, but that it would actually give you some options for the future. And I guess maybe on the first, with the first question, I'll take a stab at that. That's a kind of, what you outlined is kind of what we're exactly trying to do. We're trying to find out, is there an appetite from the board to move forward into looking at acquiring this property? We're not asking for the expenditure now. We're asking for, you know, for you to either approve or not approve that we should move forward into this process. Then at that point, what we'll do is, as Anne pointed out, we will do further research on pot, on potential property that could be used in the trade, and we'll bring that forward to you. And then you can make a decision as that, if that is property that you're interested in trading and disposing of. And if, if you get through A and B, those two steps, and the final step would be then asking for the expenditure of $30,000. So that's, we're not asking for that today.
So we could amend what the recommended motion is and exclude the $30,000 and just authorize you to go look at potential trade properties?
Well, the reason I had $30,000 in there is because there will be a cost. I, I, you know, we shouldn't hide that upfront. Through this process, if we're looking at trades, we will need to conduct appraisals. So I, I wanted to put that upfront, so you knew a cost, we had that ceiling, and as a budget item. So, so I would like it in there, knowing that I had money to spend as we continue down the road.
But it's not.
But, yeah, Roger said, but, but.
Yeah, I think we could modify the language in the, in the draft, in the draft recommendation to accommodate that, to make it clear that staff is not asking at this time for the expenditure of those funds.
We got a couple more questions, but I want to follow up on a question Supervisor Bagwell has raised here. Help me understand, is there any interplay between this potential acquisition and the State Lands' request to rezone the property across the road?
No, there is not, Mayor. There's no connection between this and State Lands.
No trail connection, no nothing? In other words, what I'm asking is, because I suspect that the State Lands issue is going to come back at some point in time, and it should stand on its own two feet, I think. And then I, and I would, just let me be blunt. It would be difficult to, for me to understand, I mean, and I'm prepared to deal with that on its, on its head, but it would be difficult for me to, to deal with that if someone came up and said, well, now you need to rezone this property because you've already taken a step towards that trailhead by the acquisition of 20 acres. That's all I'm trying to get at, okay? I just want to make sure that, you know, and if I am being asked to do that, tell me now.
The two properties can stand alone on, on their own. I don't want to complicate that issue. The Clear Creek acquisition is strategic for the city. The zoning on that parcel is, is the huge question. And, and I think we want to see a trailhead, and, and the seven-mile trail is already constructed, the Clear Creek Trail is constructed, and it dead, dead ends at a property line. I have not been part of those talks, so I don't know what the negotiations are, and I don't, I really can't answer the question of how, how the zoning and trail questions and conflicts can be resolved. This parcel can serve as a trail and still can connect down there. What I like about this parcel is if for some reason we cannot get a trailhead built on Clear Creek, and I think that's the most desirable location, this could provide an alternative for Carson City.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor, about and supervisor.
Laurie asked my question, so thank you.
At this, I'm sorry. And at this juncture, do you have an idea of what those other city-owned properties are? I mean, today? Have you, you, do you have that list? Can you present that list to us?
No, I do not have a list, and I'm prepared to, that I'm prepared to provide to the board today.
We've done some preliminary searching for property, but as Anne mentioned before, we have not investigated whether there's deed restrictions, you know, that would prohibit the disposal of the property or the trading of the property for recreational uses. So there's a lot of property out there that the city has, a lot of, a lot of remnant pieces. It's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of options in terms of potential property for to trade.
I just have a final question. And on the agenda, it says, according to the Open Space Evaluation Form, the subject parcel meets a few criteria. Seems kind of a negative statement.
It, it is negative in the sense that of all the Open Space criteria, it rates as meeting. It is negative in the sense that of all the open-space criteria, it rates as medium or high only on half. So for the open-space perspective, and it's not scored necessarily, doesn't say five points here, two points here. So it doesn't say what's the highest. And so some of it you have to take based on perspective. And so in this sense, is the visual perspective the highest base because of the location next to Highway 50? So maybe that is just so important that, yes, we do not want to see a structure right there. But what we don't have in open space in our criteria is trails, and that's why I included the Unified Pathways Master Plan because that is, this parcel is critical for the trails component.
Ann, when you come back with this, which I presume we may be headed that way, maybe I shouldn't have said that, so, possibly when this comes back to us, could you elaborate or talk to us about how we can have public parking, as you mentioned earlier? Can you tie that together? Because I think that's very, very essential. It's great having trails, but if you can't get to it, except hiking from a distance away, it does little good. Thank you.
Yes, and just to come back to that conversation, I did bring the photo back up here so you can see where that bench is, where I said parking could be possible.
I agree with the previous comments that we need to find which other city-owned parcels would be appropriate and come to an agreement there before we talk about spending any money on appraisals, but thank you for at least giving us the fiscal note about what those appraisals may run. On the Clear Creek parcel, the state lands, that zoning change isn't required to build a trailhead there, correct?
That would be my understanding. I don't see Lee Plenwell in here.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's not required because the zoning change is to single-family. There's nothing in single-family that's going to allow a trailhead. You can make it part of a development agreement. So, you know, the way I interpreted the previous item from state lands was that they only wanted the zoning change to make the land more valuable so they could turn around and sell it back to us at a higher price. So going back to the mayor's comments, I would use the item in front of us now, if we're going to pursue this, as a continuing argument to oppose any zoning change on the state lands because it's not necessary. So if we want to connect these parcels and put a trailhead in there, that's a separate item from increasing the value of the state lands so that we have to pay more to put in the trailhead.
Well, I think you stated that probably better than we did. I mean, what, these two projects really need to be looked at as standalone projects, and this one does provide options depending on what your final determination is on the Old Clear Creek, you know, properties.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, public comment, anybody? Seeing on board?
I'd make a stab at a motion.
Direct stab, we'll see what we clear up here.
All right. I move to accept the recommendation of the Open Space Advisory Committee for the possible acquisition of 20 acres APN 007-051-81 in trade of other city-owned parcels and the expenditure of up to $30,000 for appraisals from the open-space budget only upon the board approval of the land trade. I'll second that. Yeah. I move to accept the recommendation of the Open Space Advisory Committee for the possible acquisition of 20 acres APN 007-051-81 in trade of other city-owned parcels and the expenditure up to $30,000 for appraisals from the open-space budget only upon board approval of the land trade.
Okay, hang on. Here's my concern on discussion on that. I mean, I think we can finesse the wording, and I appreciate that. I think that before we can make a decision on a land trade, we have to have the appraisal. So I think that you can't put the approval first without having an appraisal. I don't know how you do that. I mean, because you got to have, I mean, you can have, you can't, you can't, I don't know how we can acquire property without an appraisal. So I think that in conjunction, the words instead of approval, but in conjunction with the acquisition or the trade or whatever we want to say there works, but I'm a little concerned that doing it like that, I don't know how we move on a trade without an appraisal being costing an appraisal, that's all.
What I think we can do, though, is come up with a list of appropriate properties and run those by Mr. Fagan to see if they're acceptable to him. So maybe what we do at this point is just give a staff directive to put together appropriate properties and continue the conversation with Mr. Fagan to see if any of those properties would be agreeable to him, at which time we can bring this item back for further approvals.
But, Ann, does that handicap you in terms of not having any sort of approval on a possible expenditure for appraisal?
We can bring that back. Thank you.
All right, there's a motion. Does...
I'll withdraw the motion.
Second withdrawal? Okay. Brad, you want, Jim, I'm sorry, go.
Well, if we're going to take a list of properties to Mr. Fagan and say, "Hey, do any of these meet your criteria? Do you like these?" We could be bringing him a list of a property that's valued at $1 million because we won't have any idea. So you're going to say, "Here's the whole list. Pick whichever one you like, and okay, we'll go with that." And if the value comes back above the 250, will he give us a difference? If it's valued less than 250,000, do we have to come forward with the difference? I think it's a quagmire that, I don't know, doesn't sound right.
I think either one of those results could happen, but I think, Jim, and you're right, either one. So it's kind of, it's kind of operating without, without an appraisal, but I think that we can at least make the overture to find out what's out there. And then, you know, if it does come up higher, he's going to have to, because the city can't, the city cannot acquire property or dispose of property outside of its appraised value, period. We can't do that. So I think I'm okay with the way that the concept has been structured to, I think, yeah. If you want, let's try a motion, see where we go, Jim, and then we'll see what we do here. Go ahead, Brad.
And I do have the same concerns, Jim, but I think that any further steps require our approval so we can address those things at that time. I just feel like the very first step is, is there a parcel out there that works on a trade? And if there's not, then we can quit talking about this item.
Yeah, I would agree with that statement.
Okay. All right. So I move to direct staff to compile a list of appropriate trade parcels and continue a conversation with the owner of APN 007-051-81 to see if we can come to a mutual agreement on a trade parcel. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, on to motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Thank you. All right. It's good democracy. It's all right. All right. Kim, why don't you bring, I know we've got the contract here. Talk to us a little bit about it, but I think we need Chief as well.
Good morning, Mayor Supervisors. Kim Belt purchasing contracts. This is, staff is asking approval of contract 1415121, a contract with R.O. Anderson Engineering to provide a Carson City Hazard Mitigation Plan. There has been some changes to the contract. I've sent, provided that information to you. This has been reviewed by the new district attorney, and he had some suggested changes. Those changes are also included. And from Supervisor Bowden's comment about Alan Glover's signature on the previous agreement, I didn't get that one, but that will be corrected. And if there are specific questions about the plan, Ann, Stacy Giomi is here to discuss that.
Stacy Giomi, Fire Chief. The contract before you is the next step in the process. Last board meeting, I brought to you the acceptance of a grant from the State of Nevada through a federal grant, so it's a pass-through grant from the feds to the State Department, Division of Emergency Management, to update our hazard mitigation plan. It was 141 some odd thousand dollars. The agreement you have before you is with R.O. Anderson. They will do the bulk of the work, so their contract is not to exceed 99,000. It actually will be 99,000. The remaining funds there will be used for some ancillary items like copying and distribution of the plan, but also for a study by the University of Nevada on the earthquake component of the plan. So University of Nevada, Craig DePolo, Dr. Craig DePolo is a world-renowned expert on earthquakes, lives in Nevada, works for the university, and has completed this, the earthquake section is a portion of the plan that they're going to complete for us, and that contract will come before you at a later date. The university and Dr. DePolo have done studies for at least two, maybe three, other counties within the state of this, of a similar nature. R.O. Anderson also has experience doing this. They've done documents, these exact same documents for four or five other counties within the state of Nevada. They've worked with the State of Nevada themselves. And the person we're going to be using, Stephanie Hicks, is well-versed in dealing with FEMA on the construction of a hazard mitigation plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
One quick, and I got some lights over here from Supervisor Bayard and Supervisor Brinkowski. On my handout that you gave to me today, there are words that are bracketed or circled. What does that mean?
Those were the changes that were made to the contract.
Their additions or their deletions?
Addition. Changes from he, she, to it because it's a corporation, ladder.
I just didn't understand the format.
Right, I just want to, just italics, just to show what was changed, so you knew where was, what was changed in those pages.
Okay. Right. Okay, thank you. All right. All right. Supervisor Bayard and Supervisor Shurk.
Stacy, under the defined contract amount and under the scope of work, it says the scope of services does not include our presence at the Carson City Board of Supervisors meeting to adopt the plan.
Right.
However, should you just, I mean, will it change the price? They should be here.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that to you. I spoke to them about that, and they will be here. They will be here for us. We're going to be, your new fire chief and Stacy Belt, her deputy emergency manager, will be intimately involved in the construction of this document. They will be able to do a presentation, but Stephanie Hicks will be here. I spoke to her directly and specifically asked that question because I said, "We're going to want you there, and the board is probably going to want you there because we're paying for your expertise, and they'd like to see that we got your expertise." So she said, "Totally understand that." They will be here for the presentation. Help us coordinate that. So they'll be here.
And Stacy, per our conversation, they'll be here at no additional charge.
At no additional charge, yes, that's correct. We will not pay extra for them to be here. If I have to, I'll take a day off. I'll go pick Stephanie up, and I'll bring her to the board meeting.
Charge your time to that other entity you're going to work for.
I'll do that. I'll do that. I'll see how that goes.
See how that goes.
Yeah, I'll see how that goes. I'll let you know.
Other board comments before I take public comment? Don't see any public comment? Don't see any. Board, we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve contract number 1415-121 pursuant to NRS 332.115, subsection 1B with R.O. Anderson Engineering, Inc., to provide professional services for the Carson City Hazard Mitigation Plan update in an amount not to exceed $99,000, to be funded 75% from a Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management grant, and 25% from the Carson City General Fund contingency account.
There's a motion.
With the contract changes as submitted.
A second. There's a motion in the second by Supervisor Brinkowski on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Let's take up ISO stuff. Go.
Yeah. Item 21A. Stacy Giomi, again. Item 21A is just a quick rundown of the report that I presented to you. I felt it was worthy of note to bring this to you because it resulted in the reduction, or the improvement, I should say, of our rating. So let me back up just a bit. The Insurance Services Office, we know them in our industry as ISO, is a for-profit company that sells various pieces of information to insurance companies around the U.S. In August of last year, they conducted an evaluation visit of us to determine a new public protection rating classification. So that PPC, as they call it, is a rating that's used in the decision-making process by insurance companies to establish what coverage is to write for a given business and, to a lesser extent, for residences, and what rates to charge. That public protection classification is just a component of the decision-making process that the insurance companies use. The process they use internally is a little like sausage. You don't know what goes into it, but they set up a rate on the back end. And so they don't tell you exactly how that rating affects, or the rating we get affects insurance rates specifically. No one will say that because ISO is compiling data and selling it to insurance companies. So how Karen's insurance company uses it may not be the way Brad's insurance company uses it. Each insurance company can use that information differently with whatever other information they compile internally to determine a risk for a given property. So the rating scale is a 1 to a 10, with 10 being the lowest or the worst rating, and 1 being the highest rating. Our last evaluation was done in 2005, and we had a rating of 3/10. The dual rating is, that second number, that higher number, is any property located beyond five miles, road miles, from a fire station. You can't have a rating anything but 10 if you don't have a fire station within five miles of the property you own. So they changed their rating procedures. So anyway, we were a 3, generally a 3. They changed their rating procedures in 2012. They used to use a proprietary rating system. They wouldn't disclose how they were giving you points. And now they base it on national standards, like the National Fire Protection Association standards. So things that we're more familiar with in the fire industry. So in our most recent rating, we improved, and we were rated as a 2/10. So we dropped one whole class. They rate over 50,000 fire departments in the U.S., and there are only about 750 of them that have a Class II rating. So it's about 1.5%. So it puts us in this capacity in the top 1.5% of fire departments in the U.S. We missed having the highest rating, a Class I rating, by 5.07 points. There are only 60 Class I departments in the whole of the U.S. So that's, it's under a percentage point for Class I departments. In Nevada, there are two Class I departments. Just by comparison, Las Vegas Fire Rescue is a Class I department, and oddly enough, Fallon Churchill is a Class I fire department. I don't, just as a side note, I don't think they'll maintain that in the new system just because of, they have some staffing issues, I think, that'll cause them a problem. So the rating is comprised of evaluations of our communications center, the fire department itself, and our water system. Communications accounts for 10% of that rating, fire accounts for 50%, and the water system accounts for 40%. And it's based off of points earned in each category. So you can get a total of 110 points. If you have higher than 90 points, you're a Class I department. They used to stop at 10 points, but they award 10 extra points based on input from fire service around the country when they change their rating to allow extra for fire prevention and public education, which was never evaluated before. And I want to mention one more thing. ISO only evaluates our responses to structural firefighters. They don't rate anything else. They don't consider that we go to medical emergencies. They don't consider that we go to technical rescues. They don't consider that we have wildland fires, except if that wildland fire is burning a house. They don't care about car fires or dumpster fires or anything else. Only response to structural fires. So kudos, really, to our communications department at the sheriff's office and to Public Works because between them, we did very well. Communications got 85% of the possible points. Our water system, water distribution, got 97% of the possible points. The fire department got about, just under 75% of the points. So I outlined in there for you some ways we could improve our rating. You know, we lost 2 and 1/2 points because we don't have an area ladder truck. You can get a total of 3 points there. We only got a half a point, and that's only because we have a mutual aid agreement with Douglas County and only because Douglas County or East Fork Fire has agreed to move their ladder truck from, they acquired a second ladder truck. They were stationing both of their ladder trucks in Mindon. When ours went down, we asked if there's any way they'd move it to the North County, which they did, and that truck now sits at Station 12, which is on Topsy Lane. So had they not agreed to do that, which they didn't have to do, they did it for their own reasons also, but it was a cooperative effort, we wouldn't have even gotten that half point. half point. We lost six more points because we don't tie our call analysis to our station location. Is really not much you're going to do about that. That's a new rating component of the, of the overall rating, or it's a new component of the overall rating. They want you to analyze your calls, look at your station placement, and determine if you're correct. We're obviously not going to pick up a fire station and move it. But we could garner some points just by doing the study, which, before we do the next one, I'm sure we'll, we'll do. Because it's easy to do it through analysis of our calls and, and work with our GIS people. We're a little bit low on staffing to get the maximum points there. And then in the training category, there's some things we can do to maximize our points there. So I, I think with a little bit of work, and we'll get reevaluated in four years, I think we can easily get to, and, assuming that nothing else changes, I think the department could fairly easily get to a Class One rating. And, and that's going to be my recommendation to the new chief, to work for that over the next three or four years. I think we can do it relatively easily. So anyway, that's, that's the overall presentation. I, I'm not going to go into the details beyond that because you have the full report, and it was posted on the website. So, happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Shirk, then Supervisor Ray Boudreaux.
Morning, Stacy. Good morning. On your, the brief from ISO, it does, or I think you elaborated on it, owning our own ladder truck should be a priority for us. Has it been a priority, has been brought to the board as a priority for the fire department to have this vehicle since two thousand and eight? And if, do you think it will in the future?
Yes, it's been one of our priority items in the fire department for, well, ever since we haven't had one. Yes, it has been.
Does it put the community, I'm assuming there is some risk by not having it here?
You know, everything, everything we do is about managing risk. If, if you were to ask me, and, and, again, you've, you've got a new chief who you're going to have to ask this question of, but as I leave, if you were to ask me if you could give me a million dollars to buy a new ladder truck, or a million dollars to use some other way, the other way I would use it is to add ambulances. I think that's our bigger need. We may pay a little more in insurance, our community may pay a little more in insurance, but we, we just had our busiest year last year. We ran almost nine thousand calls, and eighty-five percent of those were medical calls. So when you start to manage risk, given a limited budget, and you'd ask me how to spend that money, it would be to put one or two more ambulances on the road. That's how I would do it. It's, it's our most pressing need.
Wow, thank you.
Karen.
Stacy, first of all, it's a credit to you that we got our rating moved up, so thank you for that.
Welcome.
The one question I do have is you make reference to fire stations fifty-nine and fifty-four not meeting minimum requirements. Was that because of staffing?
Correct.
Okay.
So fifty-nine is just really a designated, or the designation we use for Public Works. It's just all of Public Works. So they're in there because we rely on them to provide a water tender for those areas that aren't hydrated, which are critical for this report. So we list them as a station. It's more of a dispatching process than anything else. Fifty-four is our wildland station up by the community college. When it was originally opened in the early eighties as a cooperative station between the city and Division of Forest Street, was eventually thought it would be a full-time station. That would still be the plan, but it's only staffed seasonally and only with wildland firefighters, not with all-risk firefighters.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Public comment? Anybody? Board? Okay, I think that was information only. Let's take up the item of twenty-one B, resolution on a fee schedule, potential resolution on a fee schedule. Chief?
All right. The next item, this is our annual revision to our fee schedule. This is the resolution that I bring forward for you to update the fees that we charge when we respond out of town to wildland fires. It's also what we use to seek cost recovery on court cases, arson cases, uncontrolled fire cases where we take things to court and seek to recoup costs. The costs are increasing with labor and benefits, benefit costs going up, and there's some slight inflation increase in there as well.
Board comments? Seeing none, public comment? Motion's in order.
Resolution number?
Two thousand and fifteen R-three.
I move to adopt resolution number two thousand and fifteen R-three, a resolution of the Carson City Board of Supervisors accepting a fee schedule for use and billing for the fire department services.
Second.
Motion, and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried, unanimous. Okay.
Thank you all. I'm, I'm out. It's been a pleasure. I won't be a stranger, though. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Stacy, for everything, man. Okay. We'll miss your face around here. Okay, let's take up, we're ready to do Public Works. You guys, you all set up? Ready to go?
We're ready. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, we'll take up item twenty-two, status improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. Darren and David. Okay.
Darren Schultz, for the record, Public Works, and David Bruquette here. We are going to just take a few brief minutes to give you an update as to where we are on our, our project out at, David will explain the terminology. This is relatively new, as you see here, but, but he'll explain a little bit behind that. Anyway, as, as you'll remember, this, this process started about two and a half years ago, and ultimately, we got to, the, the first big hurdle was, was getting the rates that we needed to, to fix our, our facility. And we, we haven't been before you since we awarded the contract for the initial design. So, we're intermittently, although this, we're not at a real big milestone yet, we're going to come back to you and just give you an update as to what's going on out there, and then hopefully answer any questions. So, we're relatively brief here today. Give you a thirty-thousand-foot level. If you would like more specifics, we can, we can do that today, or if you want something brought back, we can do that. So I'll turn it over to David for the details.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Board members? Okay, so here is the existing aerial photo of the treatment plant. And I want to talk about some terminology that we're moving toward. So as part of this, this rate increase, when, when we looked at this, we had to make some, some significant improvements to portions of the treatment plant. And we're working with both our construction manager and with our design consultant. We've able, been able to add a significantly more value to the ratepayers and to do a lot more with the money that we had. And so part of this is some new terminology, water resource recovery facility, because we're providing benefits. We're going to be doing some nutrient removal out of the treatment plant, and then, you know, providing upgrades to the reuse side of things. But specific to that, so the, the new terminology, I mean, I know we called it a sewer plant, but it's really moving into a much more newer technology. This technology is not the, you know, the cutting-edge, state-of-the-art. It's a tried-and-true technology, and it works. So with the, with the upgrades here, you see, here's, one of the things we're putting in in the very beginning is every, all the sewage comes into the treatment plant at the beginning part of the plant. And so we're going to be adding a new pump station, and what this is going to do is it's going to lift everything up so that gravity's through the rest of the plant. So, we'll see some benefits out of this in that, right now, we pump water throughout the plant in, in many different ways. This is going to simplify the process, so it's going to be pumped once and then gravity through the plant. So there'll be some energy savings there. The next component here is going to go out into that field. That's the new headworks, and this is going to be the equipment put in to remove the larger components that, that come into the wastewater treatment plant, and that'll help the downstream side of things significantly. The next component is the biggest component, and this is what we call bioreactors. This is the heart of the system that we're putting in. It's going out there in the field. This is an approximate location where it's going. And one of the things that we are doing with these bioreactors is, this technology that we're putting in is going to give us what we call nutrient removal, and the Nevada Division Environmental Protection's been asking for this. So, this is going to help lower some of our nutrients, not to ultra-low levels, but to lower levels, to aid in the reclaimed or reused water system significantly. Moving on, we're going to put in new settling tanks. These are just called final.
David, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Is that specifically nitrogen?
Yes, nitrogen and phosphorus.
Okay.
These are the final clarifiers, just big settling tanks to help settle things out for us. We're, we're retooling, this is, this, this flow equalization basin. It has a different purpose now, but we're using that existing equipment to better provide flow through the treatment plant, so it's going to be retooled. We're putting in another pump station that's going to help move the solids around in different areas of the plant, so as things settle out or flowed up, we can pump around to where we need to. On the electrical side, we're going to be bringing in three separate buildings, and this is a major improvement that we're doing to the treatment plant to help provide stability. In the open field, as you know, about two years ago, we had some problems at the plant, and we had to pump raw sewage out into our holding ponds. And so out of that, we, we would have had to spend significant amounts of money to upgrade those holding ponds to meet NDEP standards. So, some of our designers came up with alternative methods, and one way is we're going to be putting in some generators, and we'll treat, even during a power outage, the entire flow that comes into the plant and then pump it to offsites, so that we won't have those kind of issues. So that's a significant increase, but it's going to require a lot of electrical upgrades. The next component is how we deal with everything that, that floats and settles, and we're working on that right now with the designers so that we can optimize the efficiency of what we're doing. And then the last component here is a future expansion. So this, this secondary upgrade that we're looking at right now is really for existing permit, and then there's a future expansion plan that would go out, you know, as the community grows. We can still put the same technology and just expand it out into the same area that we have. So those are the significant improvements that we have going on, just with some visual representation of the plant. And then looking at some timeline, just to give you some perspective, we'll start out, but you know, back in thirteen, we started with the, after we got the rates, we did the initial bond in the step, and that's what started us in this process. After that, December of thirteen, we brought on Corolo as our design engineers. Right after that, in March, we brought on KG Walters and, and Q and D Construction through an RFP process, and there are what we call C-Mar, Construction Manager at Risk. They're for pre-construction services at this point. So they're working hand-in-hand with the designers so that we can optimize the benefits of what money we're bringing in. In May of fourteen, we did the thirty percent design review, and we did what's called a value engineering workshop, and we brought in the C-Mar representative, we brought in other engineers, both here locally and from engineering firms, and said, "How can we, how can we optimize the dollars that we have?" And that provided significant input, and that's how we got some of these increases that I'm talking about, to maximize that initial bond that we have. Just recently, we've brought on KG Walters to work on our sodium hypochlorite. We had some failures in the plant that just couldn't wait for the plant to be done. So we had to bring them on ahead of time, and that went out for a request for proposal for a little over half a million-dollar project as part of this, and they're in the process of fixing that right now. This is where we are right now. We're at, we're in the process of doing our sixty percent design review for the, for all the upgrades. The next item coming up is the next component of this, the sewer bond, the eighteen-million-dollar sewer bond. Looking forward then, what we're looking at in April, approximately April this year, we should hit about a ninety percent design review of the treatment plant. In July of this year, in the summer, we're going to be working with our construction manager at Risk in trying to get a guaranteed maximum price from them to know how much this is actually going to cost. And then, we hope in summer, in August, we'll be able to issue a notice to proceed, to start this work through the construction manager at Risk. And then looking out, you know, when we did the rates, the rates were designed for just under fifty million dollars, about forty-eight-point-nine million dollars, to do all these improvements. So there will be a future bond out there, probably in the spring of seventeen, to finish this whole project up. And then we have a target completion date, and we're putting in the winter of about two thousand and seventeen. I know that was quick. I know there was a lot of information there, but I just wanted to provide a high-level interview and then answer any questions that you may have.
David, my question is in lieu of the effluent, the leakage at Brunswick Canyon, and your efforts to upgrade effluent to get rid of what you call nutrients, nitrogen, phosphorus, so forth. Is there any effort to try and make that water clean enough such that in the years that we have excess effluent, it could actually be sold as a commodity downriver to perhaps farmers or whatever, make it clean enough such that it could go back into the river?
You know, we briefly talked about this about a year ago, roughly, and the, the ability to upgrade the treatment to go back into the river would have been a significantly much greater expense than we have now. You know, we're looking at doing the secondary upgrades in the neighborhood between thirty to thirty-five million dollars. The technology that would needed to get the standards to meet the water quality standards would be probably a hundred-plus million dollars. So, so with our current technology, we wouldn't be able to get down there, no.
Is there any effort to try and, and mitigate the leakage that we have in the dam now?
Currently, in part of our plans, there's not, but it's not just the leakage specific to, I mean, it's the leakage in the entire system. But what we are looking at in our, our capital improvement plan is improvements to the whole reuse side of things, to help tighten things up, to help things more efficient, to upgrade pumps. So components of it are being looked at, but not specific to Brunswick Canyon reservoir.
Supervisor Brinkowski, Supervisor Shirk, then Supervisor Brinkowski, I'm sorry.
David, I, I understand the upgrades you're making at the sewer treatment, sewer treatment plant and the cost impacted. How is that, how does the sewer lines itself affect what we're doing out there? I mean, if the sewer lines leading to all of this are not improved, does it hurt this investment we're making?
Actually, as part of this bonding process, we're only giving you an update specific to the treatment plant, but part of this is upgrades to both the collection, the treatment, and the reuse side. So, we are looking at the collection side. This, looking at it from a risk basis, this was our biggest and highest priority, but in our, in our future plans, in our five, current five-year CIP, we do, we do address the collection side, and we are looking at the collection side and tightening that system up.
And the last slide you had, up, the last, you took it down, sorry. It said, "Future bonds in two thousand and seventeen, possible." What would that entail? How much money are we looking at there in the future?
The rates were based on about forty-eight-point-million, forty-eight-point-nine million dollars, so that would be about an eight million dollars, roughly, eight million dollars.
And the rates that have been increased, that will cover what we're doing now, and they will cover the two thousand and seventeen financially?
Yes, that's correct.
Everything will cover, correct?
Yes.
And David, first, how much is, where are we at on the twenty-two-million-dollar bond? How much of that has been spent? Where are we at in that? Because we have, the next item up is an additional eighteen million. So can you kind of walk us through the financial picture of, we had the twenty-two million, how much of that has been spent? How much of that is going to be spent over the next year or two years? And what's the eighteen million going to go towards?
Okay, so, looking at the initial bond that we took, we did our initial contract with Corolo Engineers, and that was just under three million dollars. We did a contract with KG Q and D, and I don't remember that exact amount, but it was somewhere, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then, right now, our KG Walters, we did roughly just a little over half a million-dollar contract for the bleach rehab facility. So that's currently what we, what we have done for the wastewater side of things. There has been some work in the collections also. There's some projects that are going on, on the sewer lines. I'm sorry, I don't have that information readily available right now in front of me, but I know that some of that money was part of that, because when we do a sewer bond, sewer's not just looking at the treatment, it's collection, treatment, and reuse, but the majority is here.
Million dollars.
A million? So, so Darren was saying about a million dollars on the collection side so far for that. So, moving forward, what, this eighteen million, in addition to the existing money we have, we, we plan on starting the whole project this summer. And what we need to make the project work is we have to have the funding source in place prior to starting the project, or we have to phase the project. So the best value to the ratepayers is to be able to get it all under one umbrella and do it as one project, instead of trying to break it up and do it in various components. And that's why we're looking at that eighteen-million-dollar portion now, going through the process. So hopefully, the plan is in, in the summer to start that process.
I would think, too, we're going to get better rates now than we would in a year or two years, so we'll be able to make that money stretch further. Do I remember correctly that the aeration ponds are going to be brought under roof? They're going to be brought inside?
Actually, the, the aeration ponds go away. We're replacing those ponds with the old-style mixers, that old technology, with these new bioreactors.
Do you think that that's going to result in an increase in effluent product coming out of the plant?
I don't. You know, I, that's, I expect that to be based on, you know, the growth and what comes into the plant. It will change our solids handling significantly, and we're working that as part of the process. But as far as what goes out the back end, no, I wouldn't expect that to change.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment? I don't see anybody, board? Okay, we got it. Let's take up the dollar issue then. Okay, we'll take up 23A.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. Nick Provinti, Finance Director, for the record. So, basically, you just heard the reasons why we, you know, we need this $18 million, and this is the first step in the process of obtaining that money. It's, we're asking you for, to adopt a resolution concerning the financing of sewer projects, directing the clerk to notify the Carson City Debt Management Commission of our proposal to issue the general obligations and then other certain details in connection therewith. So, the only, the only thing that might be a little, you know, strange to you are the two pages in the back, the revenue sufficiency studies. I just kind of wanted to explain them a little bit. The first page is a combined sewer and drainage sufficiency study, and this is the legal pledged revenue analysis. The second page is just the sewer fund net revenue analysis. And this is, since these are, these are just going to be sewer bonds, legally, we can pledge both sewer and drainage revenues, but we don't anticipate having to pledge drainage revenues. So, we wanted to show that we have ample coverage just in sewer fund revenues to pay back these bonds. So, that's why there's these two reports on there, just for clarification, so.
Nick, if that's the case, and the stormwater rates are not included in the...
That's correct. There's nothing to do with stormwater with these bonds. But legally, the NRS allows for us to pledge sewer and stormwater revenues.
But the revenues shown on the two sheets are slightly different?
Correct. Because the first sheet has stormwater revenues, and the second sheet does not. It just has sewer revenues.
Right, okay.
Public comment? Board, we're ready? Anybody want to send it through, Debt Management?
Resolution, if you have a resolution.
Resolution 215, 2015R4.
I move to adopt Resolution 2015-R4, Resolution Concerning the Financing of Sewer Projects, Directing the Clerk to Notify the Carson City Debt Management Commission of the City's Proposal to Issue General Obligations Therefore, Providing Certain Details in Connection Therewith, and Providing the Effective Date Hereof.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, so, I'm sorry, I didn't see her light. Go, go.
I just want to clarify. I understand what's going on here, and I do appreciate the presentation and why we're doing this. In the past, I voted against the sewer fee increases. I think we should have done it years before and not put such a burden on the, on the community or on the citizens themselves. I'm just following along, that I voted against it when this came forward, and I will continue to as we move forward, although I do understand the predicament that staff is in in bringing this up to, up to a level that is acceptable from the EPA and everyone else. So, I understand that, but I will be voting no on this.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, let's take up the Sherman and Howard.
Thank you, Mayor, again, for the record, Nick Provinti, Finance Director. We're asking you to confirm the engagement of Sherman and Howard as bond counsel in connection with the $18 million Carson City Nevada GO sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues. And again, for some reason, if the Debt Management Commission or any other body does not approve and these bonds don't go forward, we won't be on the hook for the entire amount. We'll just be on the hook for the amount of the actual hours that the attorneys have spent on, on the action. And the amount is a not-to-exceed amount, so. So, any other questions?
Public comment? Board? Motion's in order.
I move to confirm the engagement of Sherman and Howard as bond counsel to Carson City Nevada in connection with the $18 million Carson City Nevada General Obligation Sewer Bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2015.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Supervisor Shirk.
Not to be confusing, I voted no on the first one, but it is moving forward, and for that reason, I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. All right.
I believe the last action is just the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury.
There's a question, Supervisor Bagwell.
Just in, in general, a question. From the last bond that we were just discussing in the sewer, it was a $22 million bond?
Correct.
And I thought that the information I just heard said they spent about $5 million of it. Where are the balance of the bond proceeds? What fund is that in?
Actually, we, those bonds are SRF bonds, so they're reimbursement bonds, so we haven't gotten the money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, got it? Okay, go ahead, Nick. Anybody, any questions on the condition of each fund, the Treasury, standard report? Board or public? Motion's in order.
I'll make it.
Supervisor Shirk.
I move to accept the report of the condition of each fund in the Treasury and statements of receipts and expenses through January 6, 2015, per NRS 251.O30 and NRS 354.290.
Motion by Supervisor Shirk, second by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, let's see where I am now. We drew 23 Delta, will now recess as the board supervisor. I'll turn the gavel over to Supervisor Rayboud, current Chair of Redevelopment Authority.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just propose, for your consideration and for the board's consideration, we've pulled the two items besides approval of amendments for the Redevelopment Authority. We will be bringing back on February 19, the budget augmentation. That would be item number 28, I believe. So, that'll come back to the Redevelopment Authority on February 19. If you convene now as Redevelopment Authority, the only thing you'll do is approve the minutes, which will require the clerk recorder to create a new set of minutes to approve the minutes. There's no time-critical requirement for you to do that. My recommendation for your consideration would be to forego that February 19. You can then reconvene as the Redevelopment Authority. Approve the minutes and approve the budget augmentation item.
I'm all right with that. Board?
Okay.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, so we're just going to pass redevelopment then. All right, I got the gavel back. Everybody understand what we did there? There's no public comment? I guess we could have it, but it's nothing there. So, this is a convenience, not a convenience, but assists our clerk in creating the minutes. Okay. How do you do those meetings that short, man? I've got all day here, man, and you're getting nothing. Okay. We're going to take up 33B, and then, we're going to take a break, and then, we'll take up the golf course after the break. Anybody have any questions with respect to the bills that we've got? All right, I can't remember if this action item that we do here? All right. Motion's in order.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of December 9, 2014, through January 5, 2015.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, we'll take a recess until just shortly before 11:00. We'll see if we can get out of here, okay?
So one of the big concerns in history of all golf courses, especially public golf courses, is free play. And Moss Adams came to us to report saying we have way too much free play. And we identified that when we first got there in 2007, and we did have too much free play, and we've been cutting it back. But we came with a program that Moss Adams kind of helped us develop, and we do it with the city where we charge all our volunteers. We have quite a few volunteers that help us with marshaling and bringing out cart stuff in the meeting. These are for senior citizens that really can't afford to play golf. So we did recharge them as cart fees. If you look at page, I think it's on page six.
Six and seven.
It gives you a report of how many plays. And down the bottom of that, the seniors, now we have different blocks of free play, comp rounds. If you're 80 years old and you're a resident of Carson City, you're allowed to play the golf course, the East Golf Course, only for free, Monday through Friday. And those, a few of them walk, but most of the gentlemen at 80 years old now ride carts. And they brought in about $16,000 in revenue in cart fees, which is, and when they play, it's not really a, some of them play at dark 30s. So I mean, it's not like a significant part of our money-making hours. So they're, most of them off the golf course before the regular players start playing. They tee off at 5:30 and 6:00 in the summertime. Today, you know, it was frost on the ground, so they're all lined up waiting for the frost to melt the tee off. So it's, you know, it's good for the citizens, it's something the city, we didn't put it in place, the city put it in place years ago, as a benefit to seniors in this community, and we're going to have, now if you live in Gardenville and you're 80 years old, you don't get this benefit. You have to be a Carson City resident. So that's kind of the deal there. The other comp rounds we have that we get no money for is high school rounds, and we're actually very proud of this. We do more high school rounds than any golf course in the area. For some reason, when the economy went bad, a lot of golf courses decided they couldn't afford to have schools play there. We get played from Dayton, we get played from Incline, we get played from Truckee, we get played from North Tahoe. Because it's, you know, it does take up time on a golf course, but the kids go to school. And I defy a golf course around here to tell me that they make money from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock. So it's not, there's no play out there, it's not possible. That's why we started things like foot golf and stuff. And that wasn't very successful for us at this time, but we didn't really promote that well last year. But that time of day is a quiet time of day. So those comp rounds are pretty much giving away back to the community, to kids, and we're very proud of that fact. So that's a good thing. The other comp rounds you see on here, those are mostly volunteers and/or people we invite to town to play the golf course. People that we give away free donations. If you have a fundraiser and you want a fundraiser, we give you two free rounds of golf, we charge you a cart fee now, 10 bucks. And so from that point, we generate about $40,000. In the past, we got zero money. So for the comp rounds, we took in about, I don't know, 40, $55,000 between the two of them? Oh, $39,000, I'm sorry, $40,000 between the two of them. So that was a huge upside for us. That's something they asked us to help us do, and it did work very well. So we believe we've identified comp rounds properly. I know people don't believe in comp rounds, but it's part of every golf course, and I think we've identified it properly. The volunteers that work for us spend lots of hours, they work four to six hours a day, they get one round of golf each time they play. Now they play for their cart. If they want, if they want to walk, they can walk. And it's, once again, the golf course only do about 60,000 rounds. At one time, the golf course did over 110,000 rounds, when there's only one product in town. So you have lots of hours a day that are empty. And so then the labor costs don't go down as far as maintenance is concerned, it doesn't go up too much when you get extra play. So we think it's an okay thing to do, and it benefits us from a standpoint of taking care of the golf course better.
Jim, I have a question for you.
You bet.
Part of the Moss Adams study also, one of the questions was to make sure that 1099s were being issued for comp golf rounds in excess of $600, which is the standard IRS parameters. Is that being done?
No, we've been told by our account we don't have to, because the amount of money these people are getting is less than that, because it's, they're, a pass, a pass for the, a course is 8.50 if they want to play in the afternoons. They get to play seven days a week. So if we issued a pass for a weekday, it'd be less than that, and they're paying for cart fees. So the value is less than $600, we've been told. So then, I mean, I've been told by my account that we don't have to do that. So we can do that, it's easy to do, but we've been told not to. So.
Do you have a way of tracking if somebody is getting multiple comped rounds so that the aggregate?
We track our, yeah, we track the players, absolutely.
So in the case of somebody who does have aggregate comped rounds in excess of $600, is that something that we should be looking?
Well, no, because it's like, we have people that have pass orders that play, they're, say they pay 8.50 and they play in the afternoon, they may play 300 rounds. So they're paying $1.50 a round. We have people that bypass in the afternoon and play 30 rounds. So they're playing, you know, $15 to $18 a round. So, I mean, we have goal pass guys that pay $4 a round. And that's something that's been affected, meaning he's going to golf course for a long time. So we don't think it's a value about per round, we think it's a value of what a pass would be worth to buy a pass to play on weekdays, barking, what it'd be worth. So that's kind of how we set it up.
I think that was a little confusing to me, but.
Okay, me too.
I just don't, the tracking of the rounds seemed to be the, you know, number one thing. I mean, we're, we have 60,000 rounds of golf, and I think the method of tracking is, seems to be somewhat vague, to me. That's just my.
All you have to do, Jim, is come out and pick a guy's name, and I'll pull his name up, and I'll push a button, and I'll tell you how many rounds he played. I have 2,000-plus names in my system of golfers, maybe 2,800 of people that play locally. And you give me your name, and I'll tell you how many times you played last year.
Okay.
If you liked that report, I guess we can report it. It's about, I don't know, 800 pages, but you're more than welcome to have it. Seriously, I have every player, they play, when they played, how many rounds they played. So.
On the, going back to the comp rounds of the 80, 80-plus, the seniors, there was 944 rounds of golf played, and you made 16,000 on cart fees alone. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So basically, we're charging $16 for the cart?
It's, it's actually, senior fees are $13. But some guys play, you know, some of the actual cart money, seniors, some seniors are coming to play that they have, they have a 10-walking card or something like that. So they're, they're not from Carson City. So, I mean, I don't break that out, because an 80-year-old's got a 10-play card, he's paying 120 bucks for a 10-play card, which is 12 bucks a round, and then he gets a cart fee on top of that. So he's really paying $25. A part of that money is in that, in that, we have very few of those. I think we only sold 10 or 15 of those senior 10-play cards. So, yeah, it's slightly over, that's $13 we charge for a senior cart.
On the 50 Mile Club?
Yes, sir.
What is the cost for that membership? What does it cost to get that?
It depends on what time of year you join it. It's $65 to join it, if you buy it in October through, usually through December, sometimes we extend it to the end of January, depending on the weather and stuff. For $65, you get two free rounds of golf, which basically they're paying 3,000 to 50 for a round of golf, which is basically our rates anyway. And we give them four drink tokens as well, to entice them to use our bar and restaurant. And then this year, in the wintertime, we did, we gave them an additional 10 rounds of $25, which is, we drop our rates to $25 anyway in the wintertime. So it forces the guys to play my golf course, and other golf courses, as a benefit to be a member of the 50 Mile Club. Normally, we sell in the fall, from October through, if you buy in October, they can use it for 15 months, basically. But they all end up buying them again, sometimes between October and December 31st. We sold about 850, I believe, in that time span. And so those are the guys, like today, we come up here today, and we had, you know, middle of January, January 15th, and it's cold outside, and we probably had 100 people waiting to tee off today. So those are all people that use those punches and that stuff during the wintertime.
And to join the, or to be a member of the 50 Mile, you just have to live within 50 miles of the golf course, correct?
Yes, sir.
And just, if you can talk a little bit slower here for me?
Yes, sir.
What does it give you when you join this? What does that membership give you when you become a member? Is it unlimited rounds of golf?
It gives you, yeah, you can play, you can't use it for tournament play, you can't use it for, if we have a benefit tournament like an Adele's or something like that, you can't use it for that event. You can only, you can only use it for rounds of golf you play at the golf course. So, and then they pay a fee. So say the normal fee is, on a west course is $45, they pay $40, they get $5 off on a fee. So they get a discount a round when they do it that way. So it's allowed us to raise the rates of the golf course for outsiders, without raising the rates for locals, which we've done. So when I got there, the rates were 25 and 30, now the rates are. The other comp rounds you see on here, those are mostly volunteers and/or people we invite to town to play the golf course. People that we give away free donations, if you have a fundraiser and you want a fundraiser, we give you two free rounds of golf, we charge you a cart fee now, 10 bucks. And so, from that point, we generate about $40,000. When in the past, we got zero money. So, for the comp rounds, we took in about, I don't know, 40, $55,000 between the two of them? Oh, $39,000, I'm sorry, $40,000 between the two of them, so that was a huge upside for us. That's something they asked us to help us do, and it did work very well. So, we believe we've identified comp rounds properly. I know people don't believe in comp rounds, but it's part of every golf course, and I think we've identified it properly. The volunteers that work for us spend lots of hours, they work four to six hours a day, get one round of golf each time they play. Now, they play for their cart if they want, if they want to walk, they can walk, and it's, once again, the golf course only do about 60,000 rounds. At one time, the golf course did over 110,000 rounds, when there's only one product in town. So, you have lots of hours a day that are empty, and so then, the labor costs don't go down as far as maintenance is concerned, it doesn't go up too much when you get extra play. So, we think it's an okay thing to do, and it benefits us from a standpoint of taking care of the golf course better.
Jim, I have a question for you.
You bet.
Then, supervisor, go, Brad, then Jim, go.
Part of the Moss Adams study also, one of the questions was to make sure that 1099s were being issued for comp golf rounds in excess of $600, which is the standard IRS parameters. Is that being done?
No, we've been told by our accountant, we don't have to, because the amount of money these people are getting is less than that, because it's, they're, a pass, a pass for the, a course is 8.50 if they want to play in the afternoons, and they can play seven days a week, so if we issued a pass for a weekday, it'd be less than that, and they're paying for cart fees, so that's, the value is less than $600, we've been told. So, then, I mean, I've been told by my accountant that we don't have to do that, so we can do that, it's easy to do, but we've been told not to, so.
Do you have a way of tracking if somebody is getting multiple comped rounds, so that the aggregate?
We track ours, yeah, we track the players, absolutely.
So, in the case of somebody who does have aggregate comped rounds in excess of $600, is that something that we should be looking?
Well, no, because it's like, we have people that have pass holders that play, they're, say they pay 8.50 and they play in the afternoon, they may play 300 rounds, so they're paying $1.50 a round. We have people that bypass in the afternoon, they play 30 rounds, so they're playing, you know, $15 to $18 a round. So, I mean, we have goal pass guys that pay $4 a round, and that's something that's been affected, meaning he's going to golf course for a long time, so we don't think it's a value about per round, we think it's a value of what a pass would be worth to buy a pass to play on weekdays, barking, and what it'd be worth, so that's kind of how we set it up.
I got supervisor, sure, and then we'll go.
I think that was a little confusing to me, but...
Okay, me too.
I just don't, the tracking of the rounds seemed to be the, you know, number one thing. I mean, we're, we have 60,000 rounds of golf, and I think the method of tracking is, seems to be somewhat vague to me, that's just my...
All you have to do, Jim, is come out and pick a guy's name, and I'll pull his name up, and I'll push a button, and I'll tell you how many rounds he played. I have 2,000-plus names in my system of golfers, maybe 2,800 of people that play locally, and you give me your name, and I'll tell you how many times you played last year.
Okay.
If you like that report, I guess we can report it, that's about, I don't know, 800 pages, but you're more than welcome to have it. Seriously, I have every player, they play, when they played, how many rounds they played, so.
On the, going back to the comp rounds of the 80, 80-plus, the seniors, there was 944 rounds of golf played, and you made 16,000 on cart fees alone, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, basically, we're charging $16 for the cart?
It's, it's actually, senior fees are $13, but some guys play, you know, some of the actual cart money for seniors, some seniors are coming to play that they have, they have a 10-walking card or something like that, so they're, they're not from Carson City, so, I mean, I don't break that out, because an 80-year-old's got a 10-play card, he's paying 120 bucks for a 10-play card, which is 12 bucks a round, and then he gets a cart fee on top of that, so he's really paying $25, so part of that money is in that, in that, we have very few of those, I think we only sold 10 or 15 of those senior 10-play cards, so, yeah, it's slightly over, that's $13 we charge for a senior cart.
On the 50 Mile Club?
Yes, sir.
What is the cost for that membership? What does it cost to get that?
It depends on what time of year you join it. It's $65 to join it, if you buy it in October through, usually through December, sometimes we extend it to the end of January, depending on the weather and stuff. For $65, you get two free rounds of golf, which basically they're paying 350 for a round of golf, which is basically our rates anyway. And we give them four drink tokens as well, to entice them to use our bar and restaurant. And then this year, in the wintertime, we did, we gave them an additional 10 rounds of $25, which is, we drop our rates of $25 anyway in the wintertime, so it forces the guys to play my golf course, and other golf courses, as a benefit to be a member of the 50 Mile Club. Normally, we sell in the fall, from October through, if you buy in October, they can use it for 15 months, basically, but they all end up buying them again sometime between October and December 31st. We sold about 850, I believe, in that time span, and so those are the guys, like today, we come up here today, and we had, you know, middle of January, January 15th, and it's cold outside, and we probably had 100 people waiting to tee off today, so those are all people that use those punches and that stuff during the wintertime.
And to, to join the, or to be a member of the 50 Mile, you just have to live within 50 miles of the golf course, correct?
Yes, sir.
And just, if you can talk a little bit slower here for me?
Yes, sir.
What does it give you when you join this? What does that membership give you when you become a member? Is it unlimited rounds of golf?
It gives you, yeah, you can play, you can't use it for tournament play, you can't use it for, if we have a benefit tournament like an Adele's or something like that, you can't use it for that event. You can only, you can only use it for rounds of golf you play at the golf course, so, and then they pay a fee. So, say the normal fee is, on a west course is $45, they pay $40, they get $5 off on a fee, so they get a discount a round when they do it that way. So, it's allowed us to raise the rates of the golf course for outsiders, without raising the rates for locals, which we've done. So, when I got there, the rates were 25 and 30, now the rates are 28 and 35 on weekdays, and 30 and 45 on weekends for the 50 Mile Club members. Outsiders pay 50, they pay 40 and 50, I think, sometimes they pay more than that, so. It does something else to them, too. If you're a golfer, you want to be part of a club. To be a member of a private club is very expensive, always has been. Golfers take ownership in their golf course. We have people come in my office every single day thanking us for what we do out there, because they feel like part of a family. So, instead of only having 100 members, we have 2,000 people that do that to us, so, well, now it's about 1,200, because over time, every other golf course adopted a similar programs, and so, but, but we have two great golf courses that the city provided, and we're taking care of them the best we can, and that's what it does. It's a, it's a benefit to the community, because locals get to play golf at a fair price, and it gives us extra play, so we can help pay our bills, so. That's the idea behind 50 Mile Club.
Jim, could I just clarify, the Adele's Cracker Box Tournament benefits the community counseling center?
Cracker Box, yes, by the way, oh, it does, and we donate a lot of money to the Community Counseling Center they have. I think last year was 17,000, something like that, so, yeah, we do a lot of events like that for local communities out there. But those events, the people that play in those events, we still do, pay additional fees for those events.
So, Jim, can, can you clarify for me, please? I thought I heard you say that your pass is $850?
We have, we have different passes. We have a $750 pass for seniors, for the east course only, Monday through Friday. We have an $850 pass if you buy it before December 31st, it's 950 if you buy it after January 1st. They can play on either golf course with a cart, but they have to pay after 12:30, which when the golf course is quiet, so it's nice to have them on there. I think we sold about 30 of those. We have a family pass with a, with a bronze pass, we have a family pass with a gold pass. A gold pass is unlimited golf on either golf course, seven days a week with a cart for $1,600 if you, if you buy it before December 31st, if you wait till January, it's virtually 1750. Then if you do it with your, do it with your wife, I think it's 2,300, I think, and if you do it with your family, it's like 2,500, so we sell about, we try to limit it to under 60, because we get too many of those rounds, they fill up your golf course, you can't sell outside rounds, but it gives you additional income in the wintertime. And once again, you have people that, they're members of a club, they believe they're members of a club, and they are members of a very nice club, and it's a good value for golf, it's good for everybody, so.
So, my question then centers on, if a 1099 is at $600 value, you don't have any one that you consider you comp sufficiently enough to equal a 1099? Since your pass is 8.50, that value to me, so my question goes into potentially your employees and board members, are they playing sufficient enough to equal a pass?
Some board members haven't played one run of golf since they've been there, some of our board members play once a month, some board members play three days a week, some volunteers are volunteers just because they can't play golf anymore and they want to volunteer, they get no benefit out of it. So, if you added them all up, nobody gets $600 value, because we have 20 employees that don't even play golf, so we put them all in one group, the insurance company insures them, if they have, they get workman's comp, something goes wrong on the job, that's all covered by our insurance company. But from what we've been told, we're not required to issue 1099s, and we certainly could, it's not...
Okay, I'll get it with you.
And then, Jim, going back to what Lori was leading or asking as well, is on the passes themselves, when, on those passes, when they golf, does that go as a, a round of golf? If they're on the pass that allows them unlimited golf, does that go in as?
Yes, sir.
It does?
Why wouldn't it? They're playing golf, so that's...
Well, it's not...
So, that way we track, we have some, like I said, we have some guys that buy a pass because it's convenient for them, because they can come out and play three holes in the afternoon, or five holes in the afternoon, or six holes before work, and then ever play 18 holes rounds, because that doesn't fit in their work schedule or their life schedule. We have guys that play every day by themselves, every day we're open to play. So, it's a round of golf, so it's, like I say, some guys are ended up playing four rounds, some guys pay 20 bucks a round, probably the average guy is paying about 22 bucks a round, and we figure, add up all the goal pass, the number of rounds and stuff they played, which is okay, because it's guaranteed revenue for you. So, it's just one of those, it's a convenient thing that golf courses do to have different, it's just like anything else, any business out there, if you have discounts different times of day to go to movies, senior day is Tuesday, I mean, that's what it's for.
I understand your point of view.
We do account the numbers, and it doesn't, not a point to be, that's how we do our business, so.
It's just a little confusing when you see the rounds of golf played was 60,000, and I would presume that's paid 60,000 rounds, but in actuality, it can be, but it's coming on a pass which allows him unlimited golf, but he paid for the pass, I got it, but it's not really a round of golf of magnitude where somebody came and then had bought it, because unlimited golf on the pass would just bump up the numbers, but the revenue wouldn't show it as much either. I mean, if I look at the round of golf, it's 60,000 rounds, I would assume a round of golf is, if it's $10, I would go, okay, 60,000.
You ever lease a car, Jim, in real life? You ever lease a car?
I'm sorry?
You ever lease a car? Same idea, it's a numbers game we're playing here. If you look up on top...
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay.
Just answer the question.
I am answering the question. If you look up on top, we have on top...
I wasn't done talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what you're asking me then.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to lead to. I'm saying, if I look at this, and it says 60,000 rounds of golf, I would presume X amount of golf costs this, we have 60,000 rounds, this is what it would be. So, in actuality, all I was saying, and it wasn't a question, I was just saying that someone who has a pass could actually golf 10 times a day, and it would go in as a round of golf.
No, it'd go in 10 rounds of golf.
Okay, 10 rounds, but that's, that's what we're leading, that's what this pass allows.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm not positive, I think this particular report, I know a report will give, I think it tells you how many passes were played by punch holders and pass holders on here somewhere, so. We don't have that one on here, Jim. We give it to Nick every month, so.
Pass and punch, third column over, 11,000.
Yes, if you go over here, Jim, I'm sorry, look at the third one over, it says punch cards and pass holders, so between punch players, and so that's silver pass holders, that's bronze pass holders, all the pass holders combined paid 11,940 rounds. So, we took that and divided by, I think we took in 280,000 this year in passes, so it's equivalent to what normal people are playing on most, to be honest with you, so that's how, that's how we identify it. If that ever went down to, we're making eight bucks a round as a whole group, then we have to redefine our whole system, but because a lot of golfers don't use their passes, they buy them as a convenience thing, that's, it kind of works that way. It's, it's right, it's complicated, yeah, we're not trying to make anything exciting here, it's complicated, but it's like, if you go to 50 Mile Club rounds, there's 16,000 rounds, but those are, so they, they paid like, I don't know, 130,000 last year in passes, but they, then they paid, each one of those rounds, they paid for, so it's a significant amount of money that 50 Mile Club's generated for us. And all it's really done is force golfers to play our golf course more.
And then, on that same page, paid rounds, you have 16,000, that must be, without the passes or with the...
Those are people that pay full bore rounds, yeah, so people from out of town, people that don't play once a year, they don't want to, we tie someone a pass, we don't want one, Jim. Most of those, we probably have like 9,000, 7,000 tournament rounds from out of town, then we have those people that have tournament rounds that play practice rounds, and then we have people that drive in, you know, just through the Carson City to play golf, so that's, that's what those rounds are.
Thank you.
You bet, I'm sorry, you bet.
I got Moss Adams, I do the...
I can't see what's, what's next.
Efficiency and operations, pursue efficiency.
Okay, so the next section, I mean, I'm not sure what we want to do about this, but the next section is, they want us to address stuff we've done out there, so what we've done is, we've, we've continued to work on marketing programs, we continue to work on different aspects, make the golf course better. So, one of the things we've been able to do, the first, I got there in 2007, and the golf course is in disarray, and so we decided to do, initially, was get the product sufficient enough to invite people out to play, and then we dropped the price, which created an uproar, and to get people out there. So, we did that because the golf course hadn't been played very much, because then nobody taken care of it for a variety of reasons, and then that goes on, that's for, sometimes the city guys determine out why nobody's out there from the city, so, so we fixed the golf course, it's gotten better and better, we spent some of our money, a lot of our money spent, some of your money, because we actually deferred the payments, didn't ask you to leave any payments, actually deferred the payments. So, the golf course has gotten better, so now what we're doing is, we're, we're going back in the golf business, I'm no longer in the construction business, I'm not, I mean, we're ongoing maintenance business, but basically now we're not, the restrooms have been redone, the restaurants have been redone, the city's helped us with some of the cart paths, the city's helped with the parking lots that were too dangerous to even walk in, so the park is getting better and better. We've, we've opened up the whole building, the clubhouse has been shut down by the previous administration, and the offices weren't open, they were all closed down to the public. Now, we use the whole building upstairs and downstairs for different events, and it's helped our overall revenue. Our key is, if we get 60,000 people there, we want to get how much money per person, so we're trying to get dollar, we don't care if they buy lunch or if they buy golf, so that's what we're trying to do, is increase the amount of money that comes to the building and the use of facilities. And so, by adding in a downstairs banquet facility and an outdoor patio, it's allowed us to have more events during the day and have the upstairs open, so for the everyday golfer, so that's helped out a lot. So, in general, the next six, seven pages is just marketing plans, it's, it's stuff that we do with the city. We've been very fortunate, you know, we have a plan in here, how we do our maintenance, we, nothing specific in here, we do certain things that we think are secret to us, that we think we're better than other people, but I mean, in general, the, what we spend money-wise is in line or lower than most people do in maintenance and stuff. We've been very fortunate, we've worked with Public Works last, ever since this new contract came in place, part of our contract is the city has certain responsibilities, and so we've gotten some stuff fixed that haven't been fixed in the past, and it's been great for us, and so that's kind of what, where we're at here, is these things, we do have, I mean, Dave Burkett has been great, and his staff's been great, the new city manager came on board, and, and we've finally talked, he's been busy, obviously, and, and we, I've worked with Nick for years, so the staff has been great. But, you know, basically, our marketing plan is a, is a living entity, you just don't, you know, we have ideas in here that we could look at and take over, but really, the marketing plan changes kind of at my whim, and it changes depending on the environment in the golf industry. So, if it's, if January 2013, it's really, we don't do anything, because it's, nobody's going to come out, because we've got snow on the ground for 30 days. Last year, we, we advertised in the papers and advertised extensively on the internet, because we're open every day, so, you know, we do that kind of stuff. Our, our current goal is to increase groups in place, we're trying to get younger people to play more. Last year, we had, we're only three golf courses in Nevada, only, only 200, out of 25,000 golf courses, we were one of the, picked to do a thing called the chip drive and putting contest for the kids that qualify at our event, go to another event, and they get to go to the Masters and play, qualify at the Masters, and so we were fortunate, we picked last year to be one of those events, and it wasn't very successful, to be honest with you, we only had about 30 kids show up, but something put on the map. We do things for juniors, we have the largest junior golf clinic in the western United States, and maybe the largest in the United States, but we just know about the west, because that's people I connect with all the time. We average between 600 and 1,500 kids when we have it. This year, the people that put up the money to Fred Alexander Foundation, they've added $10,000 to it, we've got a local businessman that's going to offer some money to it as well, so we've got a lot of money put into it. It's 100% free to the kids, we have 30 to 40 PGA professionals from the area doing their time for free. It's a great event for kids and families, and it should all come out. This year, it's the 17th May, it'll come out in the papers pretty quick, it'll be, we give a note to every school, every kid in the school gets one. We do it English and Spanish, we're trying to improve the Spanish population out there. We're only getting 30 or 40 kids, but it's a start, and as, so we tried a new marketing last year, foot golf, we got, started a little bit late, we didn't get in the ground until July. Golfers don't think they like it, they don't know much about it, and Sacramento is huge, because it takes two hours to play 18 holes, not five hours to play 18 holes, and so we're, we're trying to do new marketing things to make the place better, and so, and that's kind of what, you know, everybody tries to do in our business, you know, so.
Jim, I have a question for you. Last time you were in front of us, we were talking about affluent delivery and how we were running short, and the contingency plans that all three golf courses were going to have to put into place to try to get through last summer. And at that time, you said that you thought you could reduce the amount of turf that was being irrigated, and I don't remember what the percentage was. What impact did that have last year? How much turf did you have to take out of play? How much were you able to save on irrigation? What are your plans for this year? Because if you go outside, it looks like we're not going to have a good water this year either.
Matter of fact, I just talked to Dave about that this morning, and he said, well, it's not up to him, it's up to the powers that be to give us about water this year, but what?
That's called, that's called footing the golf ball up here.
That's right.
We'll have to deal with it, go ahead, answer it.
So, what we did is, because we didn't know we were going to get water last year, we didn't know you guys were going to augment it with, you know, fresh water and stuff, so what we did was, we started, the east course was putting years ago, and it's got lots of areas that don't, that did not have to be irrigated. Our, our problem is this, our problem is if, so we have, say we have 140 acres on the east, you could probably make it 90 acres. We cut out about 18 acres last year, a lot of the pipes in the ground, and we put markers in there and covered it back up, so, because our concern is, if you have a huge winter, they're going to call and say, Jim, you need to take more water, so we're kind of in a weird impasse. So, what we're going to do this year, those areas that we turned off last year, and you come down the hill, you can see four or five areas that are obviously brown, because we changed it, we let them go kind of native, so they don't go native for years, so what we're going to do is, we're going to cut that turf out, and we're going to try to, because they're not really play areas, we're going to try to plant plants and trees that don't take very much water, and we're going to make it so it makes more beautification process, and if we ever have to add water, we can always turn the heads back on and add water. So, the west course, what we did is, we cut out just two spots, only about 10 acres so far, because at that time, we started doing that, so it's expensive to do that kind of work, so I quit doing that, because they said we're going to have water for a while, and we're going to re-rest it this year, so we don't know yet what we need to do. What we have learned how to do is, we found some chemicals and stuff that we can cut the water back significantly on the golf courses if need be with this treatment for the soil and stuff, for the important place, the greens and tees and stuff, and so we have contingency plan in place, we're hoping we don't have to use it completely, because it's going to cost us more money, but, you know, we're prepared to do whatever we can the water back significantly on the golf courses if need be with this treatment for the soil and stuff, for the important place, the greens and tees and stuff. And so we have contingency plan in place. We're hoping we don't have to use it completely because it's going to cost us more money, but, you know, we're prepared to do whatever we can to keep the product as good as possible. So how much money, water we cut back? We don't know because we quit doing the reports because the water was coming. So it's kind of a political thing right now. So we, we can cut back, and we did cut back for a while, and then we used it, just used it as we needed it. We know we're using less water because our power bills went down, so that's pretty much already indication that we're doing, so. I don't have exact numbers, though, no. They might be able to tell you that.
He does. Okay. Keep going. Where are you?
I don't know.
You're talking awful fast, but let's.
Am I talking fast enough for you, Mayor?
No.
Basically, we covered that already.
Well, actually, then on here is, the city should evaluate alternative landline. I just left that empty because it's no longer an alternative at this time because we have a contract at this time. And then if you start looking in the back of this, we've got some, you know, we have some more information. We have our current budget in there, we put in there, we have last year's and the year before's tax return in there. And our accountant here has been still, you know, if you're not aware of this, we get audited every fifth year and every single year we have to do a review. And so the numbers are done by an outside company, the Ben Steel Corporation. Ben's back there and they do a great job for us. And we also, so we have even more information. We, we've, we had an accountant on staff, his name is Steve Wood, and Steve's back there somewhere too. Steve used to be a state legislative auditor, and he bounced our books to the penny every single month. And if you don't know Steve Wood, then you should get to know who he is and how he is. He's, he might call me, he might have a little OCD maybe. Things are perfect to the penny or they don't, so. And we give all the information to the city every single month. So it's not like we're doing anything special out there. We've also put in here how our policies and procedures are as far as how we handle money out there, how money goes to the system and stuff. We have checkpoints and stuff. I don't believe that we've had any official complaints against the golf course from citizens that I've ever got back on my desk. I know when the mayor, Marv, was here, he got, when I first came on board, he got a couple complaints, what are you doing, hiring that guy back here again? So other than that, it's been okay as far as we know. So we're just trying to do our job to the public eye. So the rest of this report, you can look at, I don't know there's any specific numbers in here you want to talk about. We've got some letters from some people in here, you know. I was going to bring a bunch of people down today, and I said no, because this meeting's more about giving you information about how we're doing. We're supported tremendously by the community based on the number of locals we have to join and play our golf course. We had some questions over the year about if we were a 501(c)(3). I put that in here. We had some questions if we had a business license, I put that information in here. I think we're doing everything on amp and up, and by, we are no means perfect, we're just trying to do a great job, but that means we have, so.
Okay.
That's kind of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I've got a couple, a couple lights on up there, Jim.
Okay.
Supers are ready, but then supers are sure.
You bet.
Hi, Jim. Just for the record, on your 2014 economic impact report, how do you generate those numbers?
Well, I get them from the city. The city has the same kind of process with the swimming department, the same kind of process with their ball fields and that kind of stuff. So I take the numbers, and actually, I use the, I use the numbers from 2009, not the numbers of players, but the number of multipliers and stuff, and actually it's gone up, you know, now the multiplier, 2.8, now 2.3. Now you guys get more for sales tax and stuff, but, but it's just, and we have X amount of outside tournament rounds and outside play rounds. People come and play at a golf course, they're driving through town and stuff. Those people impact by staying in town, they impact by shopping in stores, going to restaurants, buying gasoline. The other number I put on there, with the 45,000 local rounds we have, I mean, 50 mile club, 20,000 of them are from out of town, so we sell, they buy gasoline, they buy food in town, they shop in town. So we just kind of follow the city model that they use for their parking and recs department because we believe we're part of that department, and put those numbers in and you can take it for what it is. That's, we know of an impact, we know we're not a big footprint on the budget, so we thought we'd put that in there for you because we believe that we bring money to the table, so.
My question was similar to Karen's. Maybe somebody from the city can tell us where these numbers are generated or how Eagle Valley uses the numbers that he's quoting that, that are on the city. So I don't know where that comes from.
You know the answer, or you?
Well, kind of know the answer.
Try not to speculate. If we need to come back.
I can come back.
Yeah.
The numbers come from the visitors bureau is the numbers they use.
That's right.
So, I mean, how does that relate? I mean, do we take the number of rounds, 60,000 rounds?
No.
Apply it to a number?
No, we took the number of outside rounds, there are people that come from out of town and stay and use that as multipliers. So if you had, if you look at it, and I didn't give you the whole breakdown, I gave it, I did it the same way that, I took it right off the way the city guys did it last time. So parking and recs did. It's a number that's, it's, you know, the state has these numbers. Some studies say they spent $485 a day, some studies say they spent $600 a day, some studies say they, so we use a number of $200 a day, which is lower than all the numbers that actually the visitors bureau and tourism bureau do and stuff. And then you take those numbers and you plug them into this formula. It says, well, if you have 15,000 people and are staying 2.3 days, and so that's X amount of rooms, and 80% of them are double occupancy, so that's only X amount of rooms, and that's how it's figured out. It's, it's a system that's been used for years and years and years to fund everything. I mean, that's how.
How do you know, how do you know it's not a citizen who lives here? How do you know it's from an out of town person who's coming here and spending their money?
Because we document out of town tournament rounds.
And I can answer a portion of that. A lot of the, the hotel operators do a survey right at the desk, so that's how those figures are generated.
Okay, where's the backup to all those figures? I mean, we're just going on the, we're just going by this one piece of paper. So if the hotels are generating this, where's that backup? Where's any backup from any city department to verify the numbers are correct? Do we do that or we just go with this?
What we do is, because it's a business model that's been used and verified over the years by different organizations, so what we do is take our number and plug it in the formula. Now, if the formula is wrong, they've actually raised it for me, and so obviously they've been using it for years. Now the number is 2.8 a day, now the number is 400 bucks a day, but because costs are going up and everything. How do you verify? I mean, I just verify by basically saying, I know these people came from out of town, I can verify that for you. If they spend that money around, if they stay in Reno, I can verify that for you. I'm just telling you, this is what the model we use is, and it's accepted model, and that's how, that's why we did it. And it could be half that, Jim, it could be three times that. I can't give you an answer for that.
So, Jim, I look forward, sorry, I haven't been to a board meeting yet as your new member, but I would look forward to comparing this data sheet against the data sheet produced by the visitors bureau.
Sure.
So that the first premise, when I looked at this report, is that you're indicating 31% of your paid rounds come from outside, or I used your chart, excuse me, I did this. Your chart in the front indicates to me that 31% comes from outside, which equaled pretty close to your 17,800. It's rounds, though, not golfers. So I'd like to work with your board, there may be an underlying premise error.
And let's back that up just a little bit. That number, that $17,000 number, that's just not all golfers. When I travel with my wife and I play golf, she doesn't play golf. So approximately 25% of the people that come to play here, their wives stay in hotels and casinos and gamble, so that's why some rooms are 80% occupied with two, 20%, it's all the number that comes from the tourism, and they tell us how to plug it in and be more than happy to show you how that comes. It's not my deal.
I think what she's, I think what the supervisor is telling you, that she intends to be an active member of your board.
That's great. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. All right. Other, anything else I'm going to ask for public comment? Anybody in the public want to weigh in?
One other final question, sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
Out of the 60, 60,000 rounds played at Eagle Valley, you're ranked number one in northern Nevada as for rounds played. Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't know that.
I mean, well, how do you?
Here's the deal. We have two golf courses, so.
Okay, how do you compare to other golf facilities in ranking of rounds of golf played?
You know, I don't, I don't even track that anymore because we can't, our east course does 33 and our west does 27, basically. It used to be quite a bit more in the east, but, you know, we have one building and we just track the income we've taken, expenses we have to pay out. Do we rank number one for overall rounds? Probably. Do I think Legrete does 46 or 48,000 rounds on one golf course? Yes, I know they do. So how do we rank as facility, probably number one? As per course? Most courses down here, around here, do between 10 and 30,000 rounds most of the course. So we're pretty much in there independently on each course as well. So I know some of the courses in Reno do better because they have a bigger customer base. Problem with golf right now, there's too many golf courses, not enough customers, so. Golf is kind of, it kind of dropped off. Golf courses are closing at a, nationwide, a lot of the development courses are closing because they got built for one reason. And so the number of rounds per golf course is going up for the golf course, but that's only because golf courses are closing. So there are 6,000 golf courses built in a 10-year span, and about 30 of those have closed. So golf is, the numbers have stayed the same, but of course you're getting bigger pieces of pie because there's less pie out there right now, so. But I don't know, I don't know what number we're at, Jim, exactly. I don't know. I could find that out.
Okay. We're going to take public comment, direct, direct comments up here to us?
Yes, sir.
Chris Carter, further recommend. I'm a homeowner in Silver Oaks, so I have an interest in my property values as associated with this, and I'm also a voter, so I care about where my tax money goes vis a vis this course. I think the thing that I'm not getting with this late material and the previous discussions that we've had over the last couple of years is what's the objective of the municipal golf course? Is it a return on investment for the property that's been removed from the tax base? Is it provide simple recreational activity for our residents? But then when you look at this late material that is provided, the majority of the people that are using the golf course don't live here, and they live someplace else. They don't pay property tax because they don't own houses here. And I think the numbers that we just heard about how the sales tax numbers are derived is just a fallacy. If you just take the two biggest numbers that we've heard over the last 12 months, the tourist dollars associated with athletic tournaments, and then this number, we're over almost $40 million in sales tax. We know that that's not true.